I call to get to order the Morrisville Town Council work session of March 28th, 2024. We're here to talk about budget and I'd like to pass this time to Town Manager, Brandon Zudma.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna let actually so Byron is gonna kick us off with working through some of the slides
All right. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you for joining us for this work session. Just a couple of quick housekeeping items. The mayor already stated, if you all don't mind, just make sure that as you're speaking that you have your mics on. We're also going to use the card system in order to make sure that we see everyone recognize. So we're here to help facilitate as best we can during this process. Additionally, we do have some paper handouts if anybody does need one.
Kind of just organizing me all over the place today. Don't forget there's a council meeting tonight.
Can you hear me? Okay, all right.
That's fair. I sure did.
I assume I was projecting enough, but I guess not. All right. Also, we have a board for FAQs if there's anything that we need to come back to or anything that we need to make sure we capture. If there's consensus items as well, anything you all need for us to write down as as we facilitate this session. So just keep that in mind. We'll we'll definitely be using that. All right. So to continue on, goals of the work session, we really want to take this opportunity to gather feedback from council on the budget process in order so that we can develop a budget for you all this year. Just kind of want to go over the emerging budget philosophy that you all have, get a sense of what's important to you all as we continue this process, also kind of continue that outlook of the budget and the follow up topics that we need to come back to. Additionally, we will have some discussion prompts just kind of help guide this process so that we can seek guidance from you all so that we can, you know, further develop the budget and as we continue to wrap up this process because it is a work in progress. So just keep that in mind. It's not a final budget just yet. We do want to get your input so that we can help develop something for you all. With that being said, I want to pass it to the manager.
So you will see behind us, you've seen these before. These are not new. We're not going to talk a lot about them right now, but a reminder that this is what came out of retreat. So this is part of what we're basing our work on to make sure that we're hearing your priorities and then trying to meet those priorities to the best our ability with the resources we have. And then again, the emerging budget philosophy and both of those are the handout in front of you as well. Is really our attempt to, you know, sort of bring some life to combine some of those concepts so that as we show you opportunities through the budget, they'll align again with what that philosophy that we heard from you. And so this is also an affirmation of that. And I want to echo just briefly what Byron said is this is not a numbers night per se. This is not a how many hundreds of thousands for X. It is really about what could be gotten for revenue neutral, what could be gotten if you were to consider certain pennies. And really what we're looking for is feedback on there. If you have tonight a level of comfort, please share that with us, understanding that there is, you know, a lot to be done, a lot of asks, but it's also impactful going above revenue neutral. So we want to remain very cognizant of that and get whatever guidance we can because that will really push us in the direction of how do we finalize putting a budget together for you. We have another work session April 11th, but after that, we really want to be pushing to bring you something so that you have it by the the first of May and then it can be discussed with the public at that first meeting in May. Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the next slide, this is something that you all have seen before. It is that brainstorming map that you all worked on at the retreat. We wanted to take all the topics that we receive from council, the things that you all had consensus on, things that were important to you all as as initiatives and topics that you helped see to kind of continue the work of this community. And so obviously, as I stated, you all have seen this, but we did want to take the opportunity further in this presentation to kind of align some initiatives and align some resources to these particular topics. All right, moving on, I'm gonna talk through some of the budget philosophy. I'll let the manager do this.
Thank you, Byron. So again, just want to hit on these sort of quickly as a refresher. What we've taken from you is that those philosophies sort of emerging out of those priorities, meaningful connections. How are we connecting to our community? How are we connecting through transit? How are we doing other things to engage with our community? Again, your priority, the community's priority around safety and being responsive to those evolving needs, some of which are here now, some of which we know are coming. And then again, heard really strongly from you about investing in people, places and programs and that those come together as a package. So you won't hear us talk a lot about individual positions. You'll hear us talk about programs that align with what you've told us is important to you. You talked a lot about and appropriately about future tangibles, that future investments, so having reserves that would address the ability to acquire additional land for either known or unknown projects, dealing with our own facilities and how we maximize the utility of what we have today, looking at roads and other transportation issues and then certainly continuing to invest in our parks, embracing transparency and access again for us with you, us with the community, you with the community, making sure that, you know, we're sharing the why again behind what the decisions that are being recommended, what's being decided for our community, maximizing multi modal approaches. Again, we've heard transportation is important, greenways are important, bikeways are important. So we'll we'll you'll hear about that from us. Operational impacts from capital investments. We heard you very clearly, don't miss sight of that. And so we're working to make sure that we're not doing that. We'll be talking about that through some positions and through some other opportunities to recognize that if you build it, they will come. And when they come, you need to be prepared for that. And that doesn't happen by itself. And it doesn't often happen with existing resources. So we'll be looking at that with you. And then really sustaining the economic engine. So we know that economic development is a priority for you. We've heard that conversation with you. We've heard your conversation with the chamber. So we'll be making recommendations to support sustaining and ideally even expanding upon that economic engine in the FY25 and beyond budget. Questions about any of that so far? I think that's all we've talked through, but want to make sure we're starting on the same page. Okay. So the next slide is sort of again, starting to break down into some some smaller categories. And we've heard you talk about how important it is for us to be able to share with the community what these dollars are doing, what these positions are doing, what these resources are doing. So what we've heard from you are several clear priorities now. And that includes town center and the public works facility maintaining or excuse me, expanding, implementing an economic development strategy, figuring out what can we do now, what should we do now, what comes in the future. And that is both for the town and then also through a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, how do we expand upon that? I've heard you very clearly about land acquisition, expanding open space in parks. So we have some of those opportunities that we're already working on and we're always looking for expansion there. We heard you talk about staffing. So again, from your retreat brainstorming, new positions in the context of supporting the work. Don't just talk about we need body, talk about we need to accomplish this work and here's how a body helps us accomplish that work. So talking to you about staffing, again, transportation, clearly a priority, including pedestrian safety. We are doing some work there. We'll share some of that with you and we'll talk about new opportunities. And then again, that operational impact from capital projects as we bring things like town center online, as we open a dog park, as we do other things, there are going to be needs to maintain those. And so we're we're going to be talking about that with you tonight. You'll hear that in other projects coming. You have a dog park update coming in April. So we'll hear about that, including what's it going to cost to run this dog park once it's open? Those sort of things. So those are what we heard from you to be clear priorities going into the FY25 budget. And then another part of the FY25 budget that's critical is those ongoing commitments that you have made clear to us that you want to continue. One of those obviously is CIP debt capacity that specifically rates back relates back, excuse me, to your town center and public works priority. And also that cascading effect that we've talked about over projects and genie on a later slide, we'll talk to you a little bit about CIP. You talked a lot about people and we talk a lot about people. So existing staff, making sure there's merit, there's market adjustments, there's recognition of what they're doing for the town and what we can do to keep them doing that for the town. And then, you know, a piece that we don't often highlight, but we need to is inflationary impacts, not just on capital projects, but to core operations. The things we continue to do are not getting any cheaper. And so we'll talk to you a bit about how that impacts our use of naturally occurring revenue, how far that revenue doesn't stretch anymore and where those additional revenues will help support things that you might normally think would be part of the ongoing budget. But but we don't necessarily have all that capacity this year.
Sorry, I'm gonna sneeze. Excuse me. Right into my mic. I'm so sorry.
Katie just jumped back there.
Sorry, I should have shut it off. I'm so sorry.
And then the last category there is building existing reserves. So you have been consistently putting more money towards transportation, towards parks, towards fire apparatus reserves. So we've also heard you now talking about, you know, additional land acquisition reserves, expanding that debt capacity reserve to make sure that we're prepared for what the future will bring. So that's an important part of what we're talking about and what we're looking at in a recommended budget. And then we have some topics that we still need to gather some additional clarity. I think we can talk about that a little bit tonight. Some of this will come a little bit later. Affordable housing rental assistance. So where we are right now is that our intent would be to fund the necessary money to do rental assistance in FY25. Our planning department is still in conversation with Habitat for Humanity. That is still an option. We're trying to refine some numbers and trying to bring back something that perhaps is more palatable to council in terms of balancing against your interests. But what we have heard from them and talked with them is we will not need money for that partnership in FY25. It won't, that money won't be necessary until at least 26. So that gives us a window to continue those negotiations. And we have a plan for how you might be able to have some additional monies available in FY26 that could be dedicated to that related to the solid waste fee. We have a couple of other things. We'll talk to you about that. But again, important that we're showing you that we're not just thinking about FY25, we're thinking about FY26. We're thinking about those new revenue opportunities and how we can expand those to be more than one time opportunities. The second one is sustainability. So Councilmember Fender, we've had a couple of opportunities where we didn't get to that. So we wanted to make sure to save some time to let you speak to sustainability. And then of course, we'll hear from everybody on thoughts around that and what that means in the context of budget. I would love for you to talk about it right now.
I guess the, I wanted us to consider that the master sustainability program plan was put together a year ago and it's just like, you know.
Thank you.
All right. That gives me a chance to start over. So I wanted the council to consider taking a look at the timeline that was developed for the master sustainability plan. And some of these initiatives go out into 2028. And I'd like to see what we can do to pull some of these items in so that we can start seeing and having a positive impact sooner. And, you know, I went back to looking at the the plan when it was put together. And on one of the very last pages, it says the timeline for implementation was based on the sustainability program being staffed with one full time staff member. The implementation could be completed in a shorter period amount of time if additional resources were allocated. So I think some of these initiatives, specifically about the tree canopy and having the electric vehicle charging stations should be pulled up.
So I've asked Jeffrey to be here. He's he's prepared for this conversation. So it's okay. I'd like him to just take a couple of quick minutes to offer some feedback and and share some of where we are in terms of sustainability and some of that progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yeah. So thank you for the opportunity to be here. And Councilmember Fender is correct, when the master sustainability plan was approved in June of 2022, that timeline was based off of a one staff person's capacity to complete those initiatives as outlining the plan. And so we have that plan that we've been working with. And so before what I passed out was basically the initiatives that were outlined for the past two fiscal years as far as what was identified in the plan for us to accomplish. And we have, I feel like accomplished those and we have been able to advance some other things forward based on the capacity that we have. I think I'm extremely proud of Kimberly Connolly in our office as our sustainability coordinator and the work that she's able to accomplish for the town in the time she's been here. I think we have done a Yoma's effort in leveraging grant funds that are available to help further along EV chargers. We did a plan laying out what that plan can get as far as outlining and identifying where key locations were for EV chargers. And we were able to secure a grant with the Volkswagen settlement funds to put chargers in at here at Town Hall and additional chargers at MCP Park. And we have chargers at Church Street. We have chargers at M A F C. So our goal is to continue to provide that EV network and structure backbone because as we move forward into fleet replacement for town vehicles that are not take on vehicles, then, you know, when they come up for replacement, you know, our our goal is to replace those with electric vehicles. And once they meet reach that timeframe in which they should be replaced based on the criteria that we have established. As far as solar, we've done a great job. We've got solar on Fire Station One, then you have the new Fire Station Three. We've got solar on Town Hall, the public safety facility. We we will have, excuse me, solar on Town Hall and then on M A F C. And the second part of that project for that grant funding that we got through Congresswoman Deborah Ross's office is to look at doing some additional solar at M A F C, some solar canopies as well as at connector building on that roof there. So if you, there's a McDonald's in Cary that's got solar canopies. And so we're looking at possibly doing something of that at M A F C for for solar with the remaining funds that we have for the grant funds. So from a capacity standpoint, you know, staffing wise, I'm going to just say, you know, from a public work standpoint, I feel very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. But I I have greater staffing needs than sustainability. We have operational items that we need to continue to support as we continue to add amenities to the community. We have to have the staff to support that. And so that to me, that's where our critical staff and level is needed is in the operations side. I think we continue to leverage because Kimberly is obviously leading the sustainability program, but she doesn't do it alone. We have support staff within public works. Our facility staff offers quite a bit. Chris Lenden works very closely with Kimberly. I help Kimberly, you know, ministering, you know, grant level stuff. Steven Spruill, our Assistant Public Works Director, works with Kimberly. And when I first started here, we had an intern that was utilized on a project. And we have that flexibility and ability to bring in, you know, an intern or even a consultant if we needed to have some capacity to help Kimberly move things further. But.
Jeffrey, you do have a request in a future year to add to the sustainability program staff.
That valid point. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for bringing that up. When we put the sustainability program together, the plan, even though I wasn't here, is my understanding that, you know, we wanted to start internally with our own buildings. We wanted to set our own standards and stuff to be a model for the community. So and so once we get out in that the future years, you know, we're going to need to go out, broaden out into the community. Councilmember Fender, you asked me the other night about your commercial solar and what we can do to follow that. So so that's why we need to addition, you know, staff in the future is to, you know, now that we've got our stuff in order and we're the example for the community to follow, that we wanted to help educate and carry those programs forward into the community. And that's when we will need additional staff to help carry that forward. You know, we can, we can manage in the in the coming, the next couple of years with with staff that we have. But, you know, there's a some things you can't move any faster. You know, just like, you know, we we hit a snag on our grant for the solar here on Town Hall in M A F C. And so that's the thing you've got. And so that's the thing you've got to weigh a lot of sustainability stuff. We're trying to take our town funds that were allocated on an annual basis and leverage those funds to get additional funds through grants. And sometimes that kind of dictates the timeline in which we can accomplish projects at. And so even though we want to try to, if we wanted to move things faster, sometimes things can't move faster.
Yeah. So, um, and I understand if you have more priority needs elsewhere within public works. Just a couple of questions. One was like regarding the intern. I, I know last year you guys did not have an intern and it was my understanding it was because that those funds had to be used elsewhere.
To answer your question, we did not, you're right. We did not have an intern last year or this fiscal year. But we also, what I've talked to Kimberly about is let's have a specific ask in a project for an intern because, you know, we need to make sure that we have an identified task and what we want to accomplish with that individual's time and effort. And we also want to make good use of the funds that the towns put toward, toward, toward that. So we, we did not allocate any funds. We didn't utilize. We had, we could, we had funds that we could have utilized if there was a greater need for that. You know, we have a base budget of $200,000 within sustainability that we use for to accomplish the things that are identified in the master sustainability plan. And again, we, we kind of programmed that out on an annual basis based on the timeline that's a part of the master sustainability plan and looking at what those needs are and balance that against what funding we have. And then we also, like I said, we leveraged our allocated funding for grant funding. But we, we do have the ability if there, you know, if there's a specific need and that we recognize that there's a, an advantage of bringing someone on, we, we have that capability to do so.
Um, I guess follow-up question is, so will you have a intern this summer?
I'm not sure at this point in time. That's a conversation that Kimberly and I will be having. And if, if she feels like there's a project that can be identified and that we feel like it's worthwhile, interns are nice, but interns are not, they don't come without some administrative work on her end as well. So, yeah, if she can balance what, what we have on her plate already to manage an intern and to accomplish a specific task, you know, she has that capability to do so. And so we'll, we'll certainly entertain that. But we just want to make sure we have a, a need and that there's an identified purpose for an intern.
Give them to me. I'll come up with some projects for them.
Seriously, yeah.
And then my other question was, so you said identify an additional resource in a future year. So how far out is that?
I think the plan I have in front of me, I want to say, is in FY27, I think that's correct, was when we were asking for another full-time position in sustainability.
It just seems, well, I guess I would like for us to not just consider sustainability as something that's like, oh, if we don't have anything else to do, if we have funds left over, we'll work on that. I think it needs to be a higher priority, especially, you know, at the rate that our town is being developed and, you know, it's, and trees are cut down and, I mean, not just trees, it's just even like, what was the recommendations for, I've lost it now, but natural, what was it, natural perennials and landscaping. I mean, I know that's kind of small, but I just think it needs to be higher priority than something we just think about if we have additional funds.
So the sustainability budget is $200,000, you said. Can you explain to me exactly what that entails? Like, is that salaries for people plus hardware for town buildings plus projects or what exactly comes under that?
$200,000 does not include salaries. It's strictly, $200,000 that's allocated for projects. So that is building automation systems to where we come in here and we put controls where we can, you know, have reduced the energy costs that we have. It's putting solar on top of our buildings. It's looking at tree canopy and what we can do for us, you know, we had the Wake County tree study that was, canopy that was done, but we're also working with Davie Tree to do more than what they were, you know, so it was specific to what we needed here in the town. It goes from the education standpoint, we do our tree, you know, funds are added out for like our Green Day when we do recycling, paper shredding and those type of things. So it, it, it's projects, you know, just for sustainability projects. It's not for salaries.
Okay. So it, I mean, I'm sorry if it seems like I'm getting in the weeds here, but if we're finally going to talk about this, I want to talk about it. So for example, like the tree canopy, right? You're saying that part it would cover like that project. Are you talking about buying trees or like staff to plant them? Is there some type of an operational cross-charge or is it, you know, equipment to plant trees or what? I, I'm, what I'm trying to get at is specifically, what are we doing with the $200,000? So, so like, did we buy actual solar panels or did we, you know, did we hire a company to come and put them on or what exactly are we doing?
Okay. So give you, for, for solar, let's talk about that because that's where most of the money for this year has gone to. The solar funding that we got from Congresswoman Debra Ross's office was $250,000, but it was a match. So it's a $500,000 overall project. So that's, if our base sustainability budget is $200,000, this is spread over two years. So a large component of FY24 funds have gone to the solar projects for here and at MAFC. And the following year, we'll spend the rest, the remaining portion of our 250 that we had to contribute to get that fund, to maximize that funding that we've been provided or approved for. And then we, I said, we have our utility software that we're monitoring as far as monitoring, you know, our usage. We have a BAS, building automated systems that, you know, Town Hall is the next facility I'll plan for that. We have, you know, our EV charging stations that we put in, come out of sustainability budget. We have funds that are set aside for, for tree canopy for moving into this fiscal, for FY25. We also have money within our operating budget of public works that we use to enhance town property with planting trees. We just had the Arbor Day event last week. And, you know, obviously that came out of, you know, a combination between our sustainability budget and our operating budget with the public works. So those are things. I can give you specifics from that, but just recalling from, from memory as of this year. But that, that's pretty much what our sustainability funds are being allocated toward.
Okay. And, and on that, are we recognizing any, are we recognizing, we must be recognizing cost reductions from the solar, for example, in terms of lowered utility bills on the buildings that have solar panels? And how is that factored back into the sustainability budget?
I mean, if you're asking if those funds are funneled back from any savings, the, the utilities are paid for directly out of the general fund account. So it's just a reduction on the general fund. So, and we can look at, see how, and track what those utility costs are and how, you know, they've decreased over time. But there's no, they're not being reallocated specifically to sustainability.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Just finally, I absolutely share the concern that, that sustainability, like I, I appreciate all the work that Kimberly is doing. I mean, this is an extensive project list and it took a ton of time and I'm really happy that we've accomplished all of this. But I do share the concern, and this isn't specifically to your department. I mean, I think it's, I think generally speaking, that our sustainability efforts seem to be a, still seem to be an afterthought. And I like the fact that we're, you know, that Kimberly sits in on project planning meetings, that we build sustainability from the ground up. But, I mean, if we're not, like, if we don't have enough funding, if we can't identify land for a tree archive or if we can't, I mean, if we don't have the money to do the things that we need to do, then, you know, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, to, to just kind of hear that we have more pressing problems, I, I disagree. You know, I don't think we have more pressing problems than sustainability and climate control. So that's, you know, I just wanted to give you my thoughts on that as a last, as a last word.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do get rebates from it. Often they're $50,000 in time or in general, they get funneled back to the department for reinvestment. So those have been pretty substantial in my opinion.
Yeah. And I think they're outlining the, you know, the ones that we still have outstanding. But yes, great point, Jenny. They do get redirected, directed back into the sustainability budget.
And those are these ones in orange here on page four of the handout, the, is that, is that what that is or where?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think I see those.
That's correct. The last page, the very last page.
Okay.
The orange ones are the ones that are pending.
So the rebates are per solar installation?
That's correct. Per project.
Yeah. Eventually we're not.
And then for some, you know, also is, is part of it is a, you know, the federal direct payback, the 30% that we're able, that we're eligible for. And we're navigating our way through that process to be able to get those funds back as well.
Yeah. I mean, this is almost $200,000.
Yes. So that, that goes directly back into sustainability budget. And we just, you know, continue to use those funds to leverage additional funds to, to further sustainability efforts for cross-charge.
But eventually you're going to have solar on every building and you won't.
For solar, that is correct. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. We, we, we will have checked the box for everything from that standpoint.
Right. But on the other hand, you also won't have to be outlaying cap, outlaying money for additional solar panels either. So the budget theoretically, that would free up that budget. We won't be getting money back, but we'll have money that we don't have to spend.
Correct.
Theoretically. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, Jeffrey, for thinking ahead because I was going to say I need to revisit the sustainability plan. So I appreciate you updating us on what your projects.
Is this your mic on?
Oh, thank you.
I, I was afraid I was going to sneeze again, so I shut it off. Thank you. All right, I'll start over again. Thank you for supplying this because I would have asked. Thank you for reminding us of the projects that have been done and the projects that you're, these are not all complete just yet. Is that right? I really haven't looked through it quickly.
That's great.
Okay. I only looked through it quickly enough. And I think you kind of answered the question I wanted to ask about, yes, we have a $200,000 budget to help with projects, but the projects that have come out of your department, the dollar amount is far greater than 200K because you have been able to leverage all kinds of grants and money, as you mentioned, from, coming from Debra Ross. So, so what is that then?
I don't have that figure, but we certainly can, you know, pull that and provide that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I don't have it. But we can get that information to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And so I, and then I'm just going to make kind of a, just a philosophical kind of statement. You know, I, I, I would love to do everything. And I've said this before in years past, even in my own home, I would love to pay to do everything I want done in my home. I would love to pay for every trip I want to go on right away, but I can't. So I have to, I have to prioritize the needs of, you know, my home, my husband, you know, our family and, and all that. So I would love to do everything, but clearly, clearly we can't. So I, I would love to push all kinds of projects forward, not just sustainability projects. But I, I think it's important that we hear from you about what the needs are in the department and what you're going to be asking for. And that would help me then, you know, understand where, where we need to head and what needs to actually be funded in this year and what maybe can wait a year or two. So that's just a, kind of a statement. And, and I, I just want to say, I, I, I hear, I hear the concern about that, that, that some council members don't feel like this is prioritized. And I, I, we don't have to talk about that right now, but I really do, would like to understand what that means because I'm not sure I understand what that means. Because I think we are, I think we are prioritizing sustainability. We, we, we've, we've spent a great deal of time putting a plan together. We've, we've put action items in the plan. We hired a sustainability manager. Could we be doing more? A hundred percent. I totally, but we could be doing more in every department. I, I wish we already had a public works building. I've been asking and hoping for that for a number of years. And so, so that we have to prioritize things is unfortunately what we have to do. Because otherwise, I, I, you can't, you know, there's only so much, so much money in a budget, so.
Councilmember Ralph?
I think that over the last couple of months, I've been reading up a lot more on sustainability. I think it's definitely an area of the town that we've come a long way in a relatively short period of time. I look at it as we're running, running a race down the field. We hit a significant mile marker. I want to thank Councilmember Fender for her leadership on this. I think as we continue to move the ball down the field though, it is critically important. One thing that I've learned is that sustainability, you know, even a few years ago, when, when she first brought this up to the council, I always in my mind just had it, it was just about waste reduction, recycling, and didn't really see the connection between innovation and the kinds of things that could be done, even from an economic development perspective. And we often don't realize that a lot of the jobs that are being created today in North Carolina are all coming from like Forge Nano, like battery manufacturing, Sustion, carbon capture. So I think there's a connection between our economic development efforts in terms of the more sustainable we are, that we can encourage more of the, what Secretary Sanders of Commerce Department says is, you know, all these green companies coming in and investing. So Moorestown could be, that could be a differentiator for us around the whole state, that because we're more sustainable. Point number one. Point number two is that I think to the extent that we can look and see, okay, you know, what can we do? How do we take one or two steps forward? How do we set goals for ourselves so that sustainability can be something that is an area of the town? You know, the analogy I would see is like our smart city initiatives. We started really slow by coming up with a plan. Then we ended up getting an advisory committee. And then we, we, we came up with a quick win strategy, very strong leadership in our department led by Rick Ralph and his team. And now look where we've come. We're winning like global CIO awards and have clearly distanced ourselves from many cities, not only in the state, but the country. So I, I just want to say that I, I don't really know what, what that would mean from a funding perspective. We obviously don't want to take away from your operational needs from public works. And I do think we have to prioritize. But I think that what I would just say is if we could just look around other communities, to see what they're doing, are there any best practices that we could strive for to do that? And then maybe it would be more grant money, working with Department of, you know, our CIO to see is there smart city grants or things that we can work on to get a large grant that has, you know, sustainable impact, sustainable innovation, and that could be a good thing. So I just think it's something that we have to kind of, today we're not making any decisions about how much money, but I do think that eventually we have to look and say, okay, should this be a separate, separate standalone initiative that, you know, comes out and is kind of a self-driving kind of entity within the town, reporting to you still, of course, but doing a lot more so that we can really put ourselves on the map.
Here.
I want to do a, a big yes and on what Steve just said in regards to, this is, I think, a real opportunity for us to go ahead and take a leadership position. I think Kimberly is strong enough that if she had a team, the way, the reason Rick is so successful, he has a team. When he spoke at the IT event I was in the other day, he was like, and we have a really great team. It's because of that. Kimberly has a really good MESC committee, which helps. And as you mentioned, you, the public works team is with her, supporting her and everything like that. But if she had some dedicated staff moving forward, and I recognize operationally, there's a lot that we could have been funding in public works for a while to make us a stronger department there. I think this year is a great opportunity to do that and get caught up. I would like to say that I'd be very much in favor of doing all that and whatever the red line is that gets this Kimberly a part-timer. Let's skip the intern because that, that now. Let's skip the intern, because that, that knowledge comes in and goes out, and there's training. So if we can get her a part time to get started sooner rather than later, my interest is moving, as Councilmember Fender had the chart up, things that go out to 28, those should be in 26, 25. These are things that are so important, and they could have been done years ago if we had been, had more foresight. I am so glad that we're making these moves now, but I would like us to take a leadership position, get more solar, and as you said, we're gonna broaden to the community. I see that we can move in parallel while we're waiting for grants to leverage things. I would really like to see us moving out into the community now. We're doing fats, oils, and greases, we're doing composting, the community is engaged, they're seeing that we're doing solar. We did solarize the triangle, so we're getting the community involved. What more can we do? And using best practices from other towns, Carrie's doing great work, I think we can move forward in a really meaningful way, save our residents money, save our town money, get all these buildings automated, because the next steps become obvious once you take the first steps. I think we need to iterate to innovate, and I think we're already doing it, but I'd really like to accelerate it. And our, our foot is not on the brake, but we're kind of in a strong neutral right now. I think that we can go a few gears faster, and I'd like to see that, and I'd, I'd be willing to invest the resources necessary to do that. And I think it is a little bit of an afterthought compared to the other needs, because the other needs are so pressing. So this is a good year for us to address all those needs and then try to take some steps forward on things that we all feel are really important, tree canopy, sustainability. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I meant to say, I'll go with what many other things have been told about. But we get into these discussions and no one is debating about sustainability is important or not. You know, the question is about how to fit in a budget with all the competing priorities. And if I had to weigh that, you know, the residents survey that is getting done all the time, the number one issue is transportation. You know, we, every time we hit hard on intersection improvements, we're putting money into it, I've not seen a single thing, you know, done, other than like putting money into the airport boulevard and all those other things. Small, small intersection, I've not seen any improvements, and that is where people are getting really ticked off. Sheet's gas station, traffic light, three traffic lights, two years in a row, nothing is getting done. So for me, those are the priorities where people are waiting, and they're not able to go back to their families in time and take their kids to somewhere else where they had to take practice. Not trying to undermine any of the sustainability, which is all important, but let's also listen to where the people are asking us to work on. So that's my two cents.
So I think we've got, what I've heard is, I don't think, again, I concur with Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Proton-Geramela, that everybody supports the concept of sustainability and moving that forward, and it is a question of prioritization. And so this is a very difficult year for us to prioritize sustainability over some other needs, and that doesn't mean it's any less important, it's just trying to compare, you know, in some cases, apples to apples, but in some cases, apples to oranges, and try to figure out the overall needs of the departments and the town. So we, I think we've heard what you've said, I do want to respectfully disagree, we're in neutral, I don't think that's fair to Jeffrey and Kimberly, I think there's a lot of work occurring and that they are.
I'll take that back.
Thank you, just want to be fair to the staff, that I think they are doing a tremendous amount of work, and if you look at what's been accomplished over the last three years, I think there's, there's a lot of good work there. Could she do more with more help? Absolutely, don't, don't question that or argue that. So it will become, you know, as we will take this back and as we bring you potential options more specifically related to what might be in a budget or not in a budget, we can certainly have further discussion on that, and I think we need to do that in the context of other decisions that you need to make, but, but hear you very clearly.
I would also be interested in some ideas of things that we could do that maybe would not take necessarily a dedicated staffer, that maybe, you know, because I don't think that the seven of us are the only people in this town that care about sustainability. Like I think if residents were able to, if we had a plot of land where residents could come and plant trees, you know, one day a year, I think some people would pony up for some trees. If, like, like, things like that, where, you know, I think if we maybe just get outside the box a little bit, like if this isn't the year we can add a staff member, I, you know, I, I'll wait to see the budget and see if that's true. But I think that we, if we can, if we really cannot do those things, and they're really not a priority, then we have to start really, like digging deep to innovate and thinking of some things that we could do without as much dedicated budget as.
I agree with that.
Okay, appreciate that.
And I think that you've seen some recent efforts towards, to new partnerships with tree plantings, you know, Jeffrey did specifically mention this, but it's in the packet, talking about a sustainable purchasing policy, so that's like a townwide committee that's working on that. So yes, absolutely, more could be done, some things going on that aren't always highlighted, but that are not expending dollars to get accomplished either, transition to EV in the fleet and into hybrid in the fleet, things like that, that I do think we're trying to be as proactive as we realistically can right now. But yes, we will continue to look for opportunities to partner and involve our community in that as well, thank you.
And also, I wanted to say, Jeffrey, that your staff did an amazing job on that first tree planting that I attended, that was a lot of fun, and there were a lot, there was a lot of town involvement there, and I wasn't able to go to the one last week, but I already heard great things about it.
Thank you.
One last question is, as we get to the, as we get to these solid raise fee and looking at what kind of excess capacity, as we look at our priorities, would there be a way of looking down the road, you know, six months, a year out to say, okay, now that we've met, you know, other needs, we can look at where some of those dollars can be reinvested into our sustainability programs?
Yes, absolutely, so.
Because I'd like to see that, if we bring excess capacity, can we reinvest some of that into sustainability so we can hire more people?
Absolutely, I think you're gonna have some of that option. So some of the things we're gonna talk about over the next few weeks is, you know, that there are a number of asks and a number of things to fund, some of which are recurring, which means that money's done for perpetuity, but there's a number of things that are one-time. So we are absolutely looking at what can be one-time in FY '25 that then still gives us some capacity in '26 and potentially even into '27. So we're really trying to look at a three-year window with what we're doing now, in part because we need to look further out, and in part to, I think, help you and the community better appreciate how we would propose benefiting the community if there were to be additional revenues available for investment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add that my, may I hear what you guys are saying? My concern is the longer we take to implement some of these policies, like the recommendations for policies to adopt green standards for town projects, or even incentives or recommendations for any commercial development, we are missing opportunities. And, and with regards to, like, you know, in theory, we could require, we could change our UDO to require, you know, commercial buildings over so many square feet install solar panels. Not saying that we definitely should do that, but those types of incentives, the longer we wait and the more built out our town, town gets, we're losing those opportunities to incorporate more sustainability initiatives in all of the development that is going on. Where, you know, where, the longer we take to start addressing sustainability and more, and this does not, I'm like ecstatic about what all Kimberly has done over the past few years, and I think it's wonderful. But I think the longer we delay doing a real step change in our sustainability initiatives, the more negative impact we're having on the environment, and we're missing opportunities with all the development that's gonna go on.
Okay. Whoa, sorry. I didn't see this.
The, the UDO that we did was, was part of that initiative of, even though we got a pushback from the developer community, we didn't care, we went and implemented it, because that was the right thing to do.
Right, yeah, and we have done that, and that's a good, positive step forward. I just think there's other areas where we could do the same thing for future development.
All right, so we are, we are at almost seven, did you have another comment? Sorry, Mayor. No? Did I, okay. We're about seven o'clock, did you get what you needed on that topic?
I did, did you get an opportunity to discuss what you wanted to?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll, we'll come back and we'll have some more conversation about that as we start looking at competing priorities. We recognize that that's important to council.
Thank you for the information.
Mr. Manager, I'm just gonna pass out, failed to pass this around, this is summarizing the EV charger stations that we have put in in the town, buildings that have solar or in the process of getting solar.
Thank you, Jeffrey, and thank you for the packet and for helping us. You're welcome.
I want to add one more thing, is I don't want to keep you and us, you know, getting the weeds here, but I am interested in knowing more about some of the things you have here, community enhancement team, landscape and tree implementation plan, RFP, so I'd like to hear about those, or send an email to us or something.
So before you go, Jeffrey, I, did you have any, like, data on how they're, they're being used, how much they're being used? That's not what this is, right?
That is not, that was just a location to give you an idea of where we have solar panels at, and then also to summarize where we have EV stations, but we can provide some data if the council would like to see the usage.
I would love to see that.
One of the things that, you know, you will see as part of the budget process is the, the people abusing EV chargers, just leaving them and just leaving cars there and taking away opportunities for other people to utilize. And so we've proposed a fee, we'll get, do it at some point in time.
Okay, I like that.
Yeah, I think you'll find good, I can't speak for a lot of places, but I've had trouble finding a time when there's not one or two at least cars plugged in out front, to be honest, I mean, every day, so. No, I don't think so. I mean, I think we've got one or two regulars to some extent, but I, I see a lot of different people coming and going out there.
Well, that's okay.
Even if it is regular, they're getting charged, so that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So wrapping up on this slide then, based on what we've shared with you on a prior slide and what we've really talked about with priorities and ongoing commitments, is there anything you feel that is missing here that is a significant council interest that we have not addressed with you?
Like, I think a couple of times I have brought it up is regarding the Parkland payment in, I want.
Yes, and we discussed that today, and we're not prepared to discuss that tonight. We're, we're not ready to get into specific revenues, we're gonna have that conversation with you at a future session as far as fees and what that is, but we are looking at that. We've absolutely heard that's a priority for you, and we're working on that, and we'll be bringing that back. Thank you.
Yes, Michelle, in, in planning every year always gives me at least three years' worth of projections and really what, what, what projects and sites are contributing to that, it's very important. And she also looks every year at that calculation, how does that fee get established? And we're working on trying to dig into where were the comparables, how did she develop that overall?
Yeah, like, I would like.
And recommendation.
I would like all the other town sheets.
All right.
Thank you.
And then the last thing on this page, if there's nothing else there, is just as we put it under the topics of needing additional clarity, again, just being able to continue to have discussion around comfort level of what those additional revenues might be that we could do that addition. Investment in the community, we'll, we'll get into more of that as we go. Okay? Byron, I think we're, back to you.
All right. So in terms of the outlook this year, we have received about $19 million in budget requests for the FY '25. About half of that is one-time request, half of it is recurring, so nine and a half one-time, 9.4 million in recurring requests. Just keep in mind, we always end up with more in requests than we do revenue that we can allocate. So, you know, we're going through that process of prioritization and trying to figure out where each project lies and consider the council priorities and the philosophy in that prioritization. Additionally, any sort of additional programming will deter, will be determined by the established tax rate that you all come up with, so that is a part of this process of trying to identify those priorities. And then also keep in mind that any recurring requests are less flexible, there are things that are going to be, as the manager stated, happening in perpetuity, so we have to keep that in mind with those recurring requests. One-time requests are a little bit more flexible. However, do keep in mind that with these inflationary costs that we're seeing, delaying any of those one-time requests, which is possible, it still might come at a cost. So do keep in mind, be cognizant of the fact that as we delay any of these requests, they might be more expensive in the future. Moving on to the next slide.
Do you want to give them some, some context for how it was this year for '24?
Oh, you're right, you're right. So last year, we received about $15 million in requests, so it is about $4 million higher request-wise than we received last year. We are.
And I think it, we're, you know, that is inclusive of some of your discussion around additional investment or additional reserve money, so that, that's included in here as well, just as a side note.
Right.
That's not funded things. Is that under future investments?
Yes.
Right, and one of the challenges that we do have this year is, last year, we did appropriate about $2.7 million in ARPA funding, which helped boost that revenue. That was a one-time revenue, a revenue that we do not have this upcoming fiscal. So keep in mind, not only are we $5 million, or, excuse me, $4 million in additional requests, we have $2.7 million in less revenue that we did last year, not factoring in the additional kind of, you know, natural growth that we've seen in our revenues. So that is.
The past few years have been impactful.
Right, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, but Mayor, you have a question?
How much did we actually provide? How much of this is your requests that we could have addressed?
Roll over requests, let me make sure I understand what you're, what you're saying, things that did not get funded, is that what you're asking for? We can give you a little bit further breakdown on what that looks like. From, just from memory, I think we funded a little over $3.6 million in recurring, and, and I may have the numbers backwards, and then a little over $3 million that was really one-time. And then we used our, leveraged our ARPA funds significantly, which really made up the difference last year of being, being able to do some, some pretty incredible things, but that resource is not here anymore. And, and if you remember correctly, we also have been in the past couple of years appropriated revenue replacement into, we've infused our general fund with resources from this ARPA fund, to be able to replace revenues with like parks and rucks, for example, that, that weren't meeting where they were through COVID, and it's taken them a little while to recover. So, so those, for example, we have to make that up in natural growth in revenues this year, because the resource is not there. And, and revow is helping us, but we also have a higher, what are you saying and referring to, we have a higher demand and need as we have added and increased our base budget. And I can provide you a little more detail in the breakdown and make sure I check myself on my numbers. Revow. Well, we've said all along, revow was a really important year for us to infuse resources back into our operational budget and our capital investments. Let me make sure I got this, the breakdown in comparison to prior years, one-time resources, recurring resources, is that what you were asking me, and those that we didn't do.
Funded versus unfunded, is that really what?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So taking a look at those nineteen million dollars in requests, we don't have specific requests on this slide for you, but we did want to show you how those those requests break down into the categories that you all talked about it through brainstorming. So the the highest, the category with with the highest level of request in it, it's about seven million dollars for future investments. Those are, you know, future needs that that the town is going to need, things that we've traditionally kind of funded in our reserves, all the way down to four hundred and fifty thousand for technology innovations. And also keep in mind, we tried to categorize the requests as best we can to fit into those categories. You know, there's obviously a lot more detail, but we did want to at least give you a sense of where things were, how they were shaking out, and and what how they're being prioritized, in which categories they're they're factoring into. Yes, Mayor?
So you already said this, missed it. The seven million in future investments, is that separate from capital improvement charges, or does the C I P budget fall into that?
So so this this seven million, it it's mainly the reserves that we're that we're factoring in here. It would factor in some capital improvements, but this is specifically talking about the reserves that we're sending to the reserve funds.
Mainly, totally?
So you have you have had an ongoing. So keep in mind, the the reserves are not part of the base budget. They're funded intentionally each year based on what's available. So within that, future investments, you have been doing a penny six eighty-five to parks. You have been doing seven fifty. It's going to be now eight fifty to the fire reserve. You've been doing, I think, what, two fifty to capital?
Two hundred to capital.
Two hundred to capital. And then you've also been doing transportation funding. So that's all in there. This also is inclusive of another penny that would go towards that debt capacity, another penny you've talked about for land acquisitions. So that's all of that is in there as requests.
And then the the other things that are in future are new debt. Did you say new debt for public works is the other one?
Yeah, I said the penny, yeah, the penny for debt for debt capacity. Yes. Does that answer your question?
Uh, I think so, yeah.
And he'll have it as we come back. This is again, this is a frame of reference of where these asks are coming from.
Remember, you've got this, you've got this source of funding that's not there anymore, and you've got growth, high inflation is hitting us just to operate. And and so it really causes us to have to look at, okay, how do we continue funding future investments that are feeding into our C I P when we need operational resources?
Right. And it it does not mean that we would not have a C I P here, that these funds are just going to sit in reserve just to sit. You know, we are still actively doing the work of these reserve funds in order to get these projects moving. This is just a way to make sure that we continuously have funding available so that we can, you know, strike while the the fire is hot, strike while the iron is hot, if you will, when it comes time to get some of these projects done in these reserves, from these reserve funds.
I think Councilmember Robi, you had yours up first. And then I think we have Councilmember Fender. Are you? Oh, no.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm happy to see that future investments is on the top of this list and that because I think that every like every year that we have not looked to the future first, every year that we haven't that we haven't, you know, that we've like skimped on, you know, a reserve fund or we've, you know, that we've that we've not paid ourselves first, which is like kind of what we say when we, you know, when you get your paycheck and you put money in savings first, because you have to have that for the future. I'm happy to see that that the future investments is the is the biggest is the biggest piece of that pie. And I think that we need, we need that kind of forward-looking, that kind of forward-looking attitude because we, I mean, every penny that we've put aside the past, I mean, the past five years that I've been on council, we've been glad it's there. And so, you know, I just think we really need to, I think that maybe the tendency is kind of like, you know, to chip away at that as we go through because there were so many other pressing needs. And I just, so I just want to call that out, that, you know, we've been talking about those funds and those reserves for a reason. And, you know, things are getting so much more expensive that every every penny we save now is a penny earned, you know?
Councilmember Fender? I knew you had something to say.
I was mulling it over. So at this point, how many reserve funds do we have?
Do you like to answer that?
What's all we have?
So you have a capital investment reserve that previously has been two hundred thousand dollars. You have a parks reserve that I think is the most recent one that was started two or three years ago, that has been funded at six eighty-five, because that was a penny at the time. Fire has been seven fifty, and that's again apparatus and equipment. That's going to be eight fifty now in order to keep up with what we believe is coming. Again, some of that over time may be related to some of the apparatus discussion that Chief Lozinski started with you, but right now it's eight fifty. And then you've been doing transportation at seven fifty or a penny?
No.
Six eighty-five, six eighty-five penny.
Is that it?
And then you've requested, again, this year, what's in that seven, you've requested, or at least I should say, a penny towards additional debt capacity on top of the two hundred thousand is going in there. And then you've also talked about a penny for a land acquisition reserve for the future as well.
Okay. So there's your legally formed capital reserves that that we are required to report.
And so I think this. Bless you. This this may be a good time to offer this, if you feel are good with that. So Councilmember Robi, you've you've mentioned how important it is, and I one hundred percent agree with that. I want to share with you, I think it's important to look at, as you look at these future investments of seven million dollars that are not part of base budget, the the initial revenue estimates that we have are around five million dollars in naturally occurring revenue. And then we've consistently used some fund balance every year to balance the budget. So let's say we're talking about a million dollars. So that's six million dollars in quote unquote new money. You've got seven million dollars that you want to put into investments. That's part of why the revale year is so critical to sort of reestablish a new base there to be able to continue to do those going forward. Because right now, if you spend that five million or that six million towards a priority of future investments, we don't do much else of anything on that list at at where we are right now at revenue neutral. So just, I think that's an important concept to begin. You know, we've seen that slowly catching up with this over time, where the the revenue growth has not really exceedingly gotten larger, and the cost of doing business, whether that, again, in our priorities around retention and recruitment of staff, around paying our debt that we already have existing, and then doing those investments have been there. But as you want to do more with investments, which is absolutely, you are correct, nobody ever regretted an investment ever, that's the the key to adding to the revenue base this year with the revale, is to create some of that capacity to be able to do those investments, but also be able to do things in these other areas that are also priorities to you and our community.
And adding on to that is the execution rate. So in Morrisville, I've just seen our ability to transact what you do give us, just getting better and better. What does that mean? It just means that there's just less of a buffer there, and we have to be mindful that you're giving a manager the appropriate levels of resources to really effectively work to deliver what your vision is. Now, does it mean that you're going to fund nineteen million dollars worth of items? Well, I think there's a balance, and I think that even staff recognizes there's a priority that has to occur. Something makes better sense maybe that might be asked, might make better sense to combine it with something and move it to another year, or move something forward, as you were talking about earlier. But there's always a balance, and then there's always affordability factor in our community. But there's a lot of needs, and your staff are telling you that, and just that delta between what they asked for last year and really where it's landed this year. And that's a lot, has a lot to do with really how the world's changing and us needing to, one of your words that you used was staying relevant and and making sure that you recognize the value of people and and competitive pay and talent investment. That's what you're seeing these ask probably revolve around. And that's not just I T. Staying relevant.
When we say, when we say future investments, are we saying these are, we're looking at current needs?
That's your reserves.
That's our reserves.
That's your reserves. Future investment is primarily your reserves.
So I think what Mayor Putnam-Geramello said, I think, really struck a chord with me, you know, that I think as I go around the town, I think transportation is definitely on people's minds in terms of backlog of the D O T with the projects aren't being done, the low hanging fruit, which I see the intersections. This is critically important because I think, you know, so I think that would be one thing I would look at in terms of our reserves, to the extent that we can allocate a certain portion of the reserves in our transportation.
Yeah, and we absolutely do. We have, we have six eighty-five annually going in there right now. Genie's going to touch on the capital plan here in a few minutes. It's going to show you intersection improvements, a phase in twenty-five, a phase in twenty-seven, what we're trying to do there, and how we're using that money that you're investing in the future.
And then, and then, and the last second point is, you know, we talk about land acquisition, right? I mean, I think that that's something important to you in terms of, because it has, it has applications across different areas of town. I mean, the more land we have, it actually can help some of the sustainability stuff, talked about in terms of more tree preservation, more open space in Morrisville, affordable housing, which we're going to talk about later. We have our own land, and we have more, we can get more innovative with partnering with developers to do affordable housing. So I think that's critically important too. So just thinking, trying to think big picture. So anyway, this is something.
Thank you.
Mayor Putnam?
So, Genie, going forward, like, I think every time we put transportation, we put one cent. So that is, that will be the equivalent of one cent now, or not just six eighty-five, right?
So that's a, that's really something to look at as as the manager tries to balance the picture. Right now, it's been the equivalent of one cent. That's been at the six eighty-five.
Yeah, now it's nine hundred thousand.
And now it's nine hundred and fifty. Can you sustain it at the six eighty-five or something relatively similar and allow your resources through revale, through that penny, to really be redirected to operations? I'm going to pause there because I feel like you have something to say that I think might be of value to this comment.
No, I, well, yes, thank you. I mean, so that's all part of how we're going to bring you options around these priorities, because we recognize that reserves are a priority. But looking at this list and looking at what we discussed, there's a lot of priorities to make work in a limited amount of new revenue. Yes, sir?
Yep. I get it. Respectfully, one cent is one cent, whatever it is. If it is a revale, if it is goes to five hundred, it is five hundred. It goes to nine fifty, it's nine fifty, because that's what we have allocated towards it. And get all the priorities, but the transportation priority is still the number one, which is out there. You know, your survey keeps on showing that.
And that's some of the direction that will help us. If there's consensus that you want that transportation to only be nine fifty, we will work towards that. We have not, in the, we're very early. We don't have a budget to show you. But in the work we've done to date, we have looked at, do you leave it at six eighty-five? Because that gives you another two sixty-five to continue to use to fund other things.
Councilmember Johnson?
I think we went up at the same time. What would be helpful is to know how much is in the reserves now. How much are we, we have, are they fully funded right now? And adding to it, does that mean we got a great project that we're going to be able to fund? That kind of information will be helpful.
And also, I think when you talk about, you know, what a penny is now, what a penny is, was last year, I feel like that's almost beside the point, because the fact is, nothing is getting any cheaper. With every single time we have a project, I feel like we budgeted in three, but now it's four point five. We budgeted seven, but now it's ten. So, so like, I just think, like, every, every discussion point about ways to, to like, hold back on those reserves, I, in my personal opinion, that is going in the wrong direction. And I understand all about priorities. I understand all about the rest of the list. I get all that. But, but I just, I'm saying, like, nothing is going to be any cheaper than it is today. And every cent that we put in those reserves, we are going to be super glad that we put it in there.
Councilmember Rao, did you have your?
I don't see town center land acquisition under at all. I'm finding it in a way of slide. So that's also, I think, something that is really important, because when those opportunities come up, we have a policy that says we don't really execute anything out of fund balance until it's up to forty-five percent. And I don't see us replenishing at that point at the target, but you're either. So that's just something I think is important in our fund balance.
I think it's important that our fund balance also be taken into account that if we're going to address things that are not yet funded, like town center land acquisition, we need to think about where that money's going to come from so we don't have to delay infrastructure improvements or intersections or anything else in order to have the land that's very scarce that we need. So that's just another priority thrown into the mix, which is, makes it all the more challenging.
Yes, there is a component of that. You know, if you look at the future investments, there is a land acquisition. That that includes a land acquisition penny. And then also keep in mind, you know, we have a bond now. We're about to sell bonds in a little later this year. There is a land acquisition or parks that could be used for land acquisition.
It's park-related resource for that bond. So it's one point seven is what we're trying to issue this round. You'll have another six point six that we're trying to work, as I rework the debt model, try to work forward if possible, to issue as soon as we can. But it's it's park-related resources, according to the bond and how that was voted on.
So depending on what you do in the future in town centers, some limited applicability, but that's more as we look at, like, Markham and other opportunities that we know that are out there.
And Brandon, I've talked about that, being able to identify. I've asked him, I said, can we identify really parcels that are really going to be park-related so that we can kind of capture that resource? But we're not, we're not quite there yet, but hopefully would be in the future to be able to do that. And tie, make that tie to this bond resource that we have, if possible.
We're in the process of working with our broker to do another round of what's out there and see what's available, what that might look like to us.
Thank you.
And may I, may I just add, just a little different, a little added perspective, not different perspective. I hear everything you all are saying about holding to the reserve level that you have today at revale. I want to give you some, some lessons learned in the past, and you probably will recall these, is where we've had to with this fire apparatus reserve, that inflationary piece has just grown and grown and grown, it's been difficult to create a sustainable model over the years. And with that, with that inflation and keeping up our operations and sustaining and growing them for those changing emerging needs, we've ended up over the years having to pull from future investments to be able to take care of today and sustaining core operations and services. And and that's been something we've just had to do because the resources weren't, new resources weren't coming in other than the growth in our tax base at the tax rate that it was set. So just be mindful that, that, I hear you, that's great, but there's a push and pull and balance between future and really how you keep the quality services that you expect or customer or community expects today, and then grow them where they also want them to be enhanced. And that's a tough place to be when you have a limited resource. And setting the tax rate's going to be a really important decision this year for for both of those sides, to see if you can sustain it at the full penny representation. Or is there something that you're really trying to sustain sustainability, for instance? If you're trying to do more with sustainability, does it, does that penny shift over here, depending on where you want that bar set for the tax rate? Does that make sense? Just some things that we have had to do in the past, and he he mentioned it, deferring things. It come, if you want to hold the future investment penny at nine fifty, here's just a hypothetical example, is what now happens with public works needing five hundred thousand dollars to replace vehicles because their lifecycle has reached the end of their useful usefulness? That relates directly to keeping core services going. So just keep that in mind. I, I, I think there's just. So just keep that in mind. I, I, I think there's just value in, in having that perspective. While also hearing your consensus, if, if you want the penny to be held at revow is, as, as we're working on it, it's an important piece of information we need to know, and tonight would be good. Mayor Proton?
Nah. For, for me, it is the most important critical thing, I would say, without a doubt. Because that was the only fund that has helped us float in many of the projects that we have used. Like Airport Boulevard or you name it, like in Marshall Carpenter, those were the funds. By shortchanging, you know, and we have told the people we are allocating. It gives me a head up even to stand up and say, yes, we are allocating money for transportation, one cent. We're allocating for this. I'm not going back and saying, I'm old, it's six fifty. Not the current cent, you know? And that is not right for us because now a cent is nine fifty, so we gotta be honest in what we are doing. That necessarily, I, I mean, so these are super important. Transportation is number one, and I would not shorten that for anything else.
Specifically, transportation are all at all reserves.
Transportation, then parks and recs, because we're not getting anything parks and recs coming out, you know? Those, those are the two, and I think, what was the other one we did?
Fire apparatus.
A fire apparatus is anyway standard protocol, you know, you guys have to do it.
Any other thoughts on, on that?
So I think that as you're doing your scenarios, that might be, I, I think, important to see. You know, when I look at this chart in front of us, you know, if, if we stick to the seven million for future investments, everything else is another, I don't know if I added correctly, like eleven cent taxing cost. So, so that, that, that certainly is not gonna happen. I hope not. And so then how do we do some of the other projects with what's kind of left over? And that's, I think that's, it's important to understand, and then, and then we can balance. So, and I, and you're right, I was on council, Jeannie, when we did that. We kind of pulled from reserve to take care of some needs for today.
For the year, and we brought them back.
And then we brought them back up again, yeah. It's not like we, but, but, and it was fire, but fire's a little different. I'm not sure when we created the fire reserve fund, we actually said publicly that it was one cent. I think some of these others, we have said publicly, we're gonna put one cent into transportation. We're gonna put one cent. Fire goes years back.
So, so capital reserve, would you like to do this?
Sure. Capital reserve funds are restricted for capital. And essentially what it is that we're doing by restricting it a little bit further, it is a little bit, it is a little further restricted. But yeah, essentially you, we would have to appropriate those funds for capital improvements in some way.
Just, do you think that the designating funds in terms of reserves, does that limit our, our flexibility or our, our ability to, to be? Like, I'm just wondering, I, I feel like when you started listing them out and we have like seven of them, you know, I'm just wondering if, are we, are we maybe like over rotating toward? Like, I know I just said the exact opposite, but I'm wondering if we're over rotating toward, you know, reserves for everything? And maybe we should, maybe it would be better to be able to be a little more flexible. But the thing is, if we don't reserve it, we're going to allocate it to something else. That's why we reserve. So, I mean, I don't know, I just feel like we're, we're maybe locking ourselves into like if we have, you know, if we have a lot of money in the parks and rec fund and like we, but we, what we really need is transportation, you know? It might be, it might be good to have some kind of mechanism that would be more flexible while still, while still, I mean, put the same amount of money, but, but holding it in a way that might allow us a little bit more flexibility in terms of what can be spent on what based on our needs or, our needs change fast. So just wondering, you have any thoughts there, Jeannie?
So.
Oh, sorry, or.
No, no, it's okay. I don't.
I'm so used to, so used to looking to Jeannie for this stuff.
You all can ask Jeannie all the questions you want. I don't mind. So a point of clarification, are you suggesting kind of keeping the same total amount of funding for reserves? But just have the ability to kind of fluctuate where the allocations lie? Or set aside the funding, just not set it into a reserve fund?
Well, I guess I'm saying, I guess I'm saying to, to allocate the same amount of money and, and have it, I mean, have it ostensibly be for the same things, right? So, you know, like keep a, you know, keep a little tab on how much we've put in there for fire safety, how much we've put in there for parks and rec. But have it structured in such a way that the money was more of a pool so that if we needed to, we could move it. Because like, I mean, over the past couple of years, it would have been a lot, it would have been really good to have some land acquisition money be able to be freed up from somewhere else. In, in another year, we might wanna buy a fire truck and that's gonna blow the whole thing wide open, you know? I, I mean, it's just a question, like, you know, we don't have to answer it tonight.
It's a good question.
Yeah. So I will say statutorily, we would still be required to keep some level of what is the funding used for?
Okay.
When reporting. However, it, it still could be, it still can be moved around just as long as it's moved around for capital purposes. So if you chose to, you know, keep it in the same pot and move funding that was initially reserved for, you know, a park construction and decide that it should now be for, you know, transportation-related road construction, that's allowable considering that they're both capital needs. However, you still need to make sure that they're designated. So you'd have to, council would have to change that designation. It's something we would do, you know, as part of the, a, a council process, go on an agenda.
Yeah.
And I think you could even look at it a little bit, and, and we'd have to figure out the legal around this. But conceptually, philosophically, so like your fire reserve, probably don't wanna mess with that because we're focused on pays you go. So that's really specific to, we know we need this money to do X.
Sure.
And then I think you might look at your debt reserve, if you're gonna add to that particularly the same way. Because you've got a CIP that you know needs that money to make it happen. I think what you're saying is more perhaps applicable to parks versus transportation versus something else. And what's the need today? And do you borrow, you know, from here to, to pay here for a larger opportunity and then borrow from here to go there another time? I think we could certainly look at that and talk about that.
I'd like to talk about that. I think that's, that's a great question. Mayor Proton?
Yeah, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, the thought process of flexibility. But transportation and parks, they're not small items. You know, the moment you do it, that one million is like nothing. You know, it'll just get washed out to the other, like so far as opposed, one million for transportation, one million for parks. And say, oh, we would need one point four for parks, there's down six. So the buckets are kind of a safeguarding, otherwise it's easy to drift so easily, like money will just go as war.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I understand that. I understand the point of specific reserve funds. But what I'm saying is, it feels like there's gotta be some kind of gray area between we just throw all the money in a bucket and pull it out when we want it and funds that are so tightly restricted that we, we don't have flexibility to use them when opportunities come up.
I'm, I'm, I'm hearing both of you. I, I think you're probably in a very similar place than I am, and so is Brandon. Let us just take that in, if you're okay. I'll, I'll add that we intentionally separated them when we established them. And it was probably for exactly what he's referring to is, and, and also the messaging to the community at that time was really important. I wanna invest in transportation. I wanna invest in parks. My initial recommendation to the, the former town manager was the CIP reserve to really account for those things that are called out as investments directly with the CIP to fuel that. And that was to give some flexibility for a manager to be able to navigate those ups and downs as you realize the CIP. So let us take that in. I think that's, that's something to work with there that might find a compromise or collaborative balance between these two questions if everybody is in sort of a consensus. I, I don't wanna miss you, council member.
Just a last point. I mean, I, I just was curious, the reserve fund for transportation can also be invested in sidewalks, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we've intentionally got flexibility within that.
We made that.
And I think it's also important, and this is a conversation for another time, but I think the, the longer that we wait to invest in transportation, the more congested we're gonna get because of where DOT is. And, I mean, DOT is an absolute mess right now. Projects are getting delayed. I've spoken to Attorney General Stein about this. I mean, if he becomes, whoever becomes the governor, I think there should be a restructuring of the agency. And I think, you know, Mayor Proton, I know you chair the NCLM committee, we, we have a legislative agenda here. I think it's important for us, our number one priority should be going to the general assembly, even to the Republicans that are dispersing the funds and say that we have to change, that we have to address how DOT is funded. Because the revenues are going down so much, and that's a conversation for another time, but I think that's critically important. This is the number one issue facing towns like Morseville, and the longer we wait to have that conversation, it's gonna, it's gonna really, we're, we're, we're at, we're at a crossingroads now with the transportation the way it is.
Get them to fund schools while you're at it. I mean.
Yeah, but I mean.
Fund anything. All right. Byron, the town manager, you ready to move?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I know we've, we've kind of covered this a little bit. Town manager covered the fact that we do have a base budget. Right now, we do have currently about five million dollars in capacity. Our base revenues at forty-eight and a half million is based on the current revenue neutral tax rate. So a little bit over half of your revenues exist in that ad valorem taxes. So that's also where any kind of additional capacity we're gonna wanna see at this point. We've done a good job with, with departments kind of identifying where our revenues are. We're continuously, you know, evaluating those and trying to, you know, pick up any additional revenue that we can. But that's currently where we sit. So also looking at the additional capacity playbook, first place we look at is our tax base. So we're looking to reinvest any additional revaluation revenue into community needs. And in addition to that, we do have a little bit stronger than average tax base, tax base growth. You know, traditionally, we've seen about three percent. Now we're currently sitting at about four percent outside of, of revow. So while that's positive, you know, obviously, we're still seeing inflationary costs continue to skyrocket. So I don't want you all to think that just because our tax bases, our ad valorem taxes are going up four percent, that automatically, you know, puts us in the clear. There are still those inflationary needs that are, that are kind of recurring. In terms of our revenue as a whole, we are intentionally strategic in our forecasting. We aren't looking at where we currently are. We're looking at where we wanna be. So we're considering, you know, future years in evaluating our revenues and looking at the trends that we need to see in order to kind of move that along. We do want to strategically use reserves where we can in order to, you know, not just our capital, not just for our CIP, but those additional capital reserves in order to make sure that we can get projects shovel-ready if we need to so that we can get those projects done when we have the ability to get those projects done. And then additionally, I do wanna reiterate that point that, that ARPA funding that we use as one-time funding for this year is not going to be in that budget next year. That funding is essentially exhausted. So consider that as we're kind of going through this process. There are other funding opportunities we look at. Try and, you know, leverage any use of grant funding as we possibly can in order to kind of help sustain the general fund and help sustain operations as best we can. So moving on, did you wanna talk about the?
Just real quickly, so you saw the, a version of this slide at the retreat. You asked for a little bit more information behind it. So again, this shows you anywhere from revenue neutral at, at what would be thirty cents up to, you know, holding nine cents, which would keep us at thirty-nine. So again, at nine cents, you would generate eight and a half million dollars of revenue in the context of some of the other things we've talked about. Not suggesting that, just showing you the number. Seven cents again would be just under seven million dollars, and then you can go back down the slide there to see. Bless you.
No, it's okay. There's so much pollen.
And again, this, this is really illustrative of, of what the ballpark would be for this. And, yeah, really, really just wanted to follow up that from the retreat to show you what those more sort of specific numbers are. On the next slide, again, we, we've talked a lot about this, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. But this is sort of the get you the basics slide. So this is, you know, those base revenues, current base operations, forty-three and a half million dollars. We have that five million dollars of natural growth. That's where we talked about that recognition and care of existing talent and investments, so that's your merit. That's if you were to do a COLA, that's your paid class study implementation. That's taking care of healthcare and insurance benefits and things like that. Mitigate some of our rising costs related to operations and then provides for our debt obligations. And you start to see some of your reserves potentially funded in that five million dollars. And then fund balance, what we're, we're initially hinting at is that there would be approximately a one point two million dollar use that could handle some equipment replacements that are one-time. And also look at the transit study, and then there's a need for a comprehensive transportation plan update. Again, one-time monies that could theoretically be used out of fund balance. And recognizing that, you know, we're, we're getting closer. Jeannie alluded to that earlier. You know, we often allocate fund balance but don't use it because we don't spend a hundred percent of the budget. But you'll remember several years ago, we were at like eighty-five percent. We had a, a difficult year where there were some things not encumbered. We have intentionally worked on that with staff over the last few years. So we're clearly back into the ninety percentile of spending the budget. So as, as we get more efficient with that, that will continue to be less gapped there. But for this year, we're initially looking at potentially one point two. That could change based on how some of our conversations go. And then this, I think, is probably.
I'm sorry, Brandon, I'm, I'm really sorry. Before you go on.
Nope, absolutely.
I apologize. I, I don't think I really understood what you just said. Are you saying that, that you're gonna present us with a budget in which we spend one point two million dollars in fund balance?
Yeah, that's our, that is a, a practice that we have used for a number of years. So we, we typically, we anticipate that some or much of that money returns to the fund balance if we don't spend a hundred percent of what the allocated budget is, which is generally not done primarily for nothing else other than for managed vacancy money. So we, we come closer to that as we get more efficient, as we stay staffed better, you know, there's less of that there. So we, we have occasionally actually spent some of that fund balance, which is why it's sitting now at, you know, thirty-seven, thirty-eight rather than forty-five. But yes.
So are we, are we not trying to get back to forty-five or?
We, we would like to get back to forty-five, but given the challenges that we have with operational needs and investment needs, that is not, they can't, well, it would be difficult to do that also in the context of trying to do all the other things that we're, we're at least talking about.
Also keep in mind too that, you know, we, we do tend to be pretty conservative with our revenue estimates.
You really do. Yeah, that's true.
And so there, there will be some times when our revenues will exceed the current budget.
Yeah.
And so that will also help kind of offset that fund balance at the end of the year so that, that, you know, we won't be depleting fund balance. Also keep in mind, we're evaluating fund balance throughout the year. You know, it's not something that we're just looking at, you know, this one point two million dollars is not something that, you know, we're, we're considering in our end-of-year financial statement so that we know exactly where we are. It is something that we're continuously looking at.
Okay. And do we have any projections on how, on the, the growth of the tax base in terms of development that we're expecting to come online? Or, or like that kind of thing where can we, do we have any projections or like trends that we're expecting?
So that, that's really.
I'm sorry, it's challenging right now. It would be my answer to that, and I don't turn it over. But so if you look at, you know, the planning department is always trying to look ahead, but they're looking ahead at what is either already in submission or are they talking to somebody or is there a pre-submital? So that helps them. Beyond that, with the volatility in the market still, I think that's really challenging. You know, we know that we're anticipating some additional revenues from the McCrimmon Parkway Extension Corridor. But, you know, as of today, there's no leases signed there. And that's not a bad thing. That's just where we are today. But not knowing when those leases sign, it's, it's a little challenging to know when you would wanna potentially start to count on that additional tax revenue coming in when they're in it with equipment and operating and, and bringing that in. So yes, but only to some extent.
No, that's a, that's a fair statement. Also, you know, we do continuously stay in contact with the Wake County Tax Administration Office that helps with that process as well so that we can make sure that we have accurate assessed values in order to, to be able to, to present an accurate revenue estimate for our ad valorem taxes.
All right. Our tax assessor, I just can't say enough about him. Such a direct fella. And just so. Such a direct fella and just so clear and concise. He's just awesome. He does Wake County a solid in terms of being able to share with municipalities some really in-depth analysis and projections based on what he's seeing. Our friend back there in the Inspection Department sending information forward about permits is, is information and data that they, that he uses to be able to build projections and send to budget directors like Byron. And when he says that he thinks that we're looking at 4%, 5% growth, he's pretty close. Now, something Byron and I are working on in transitioning something between what I've done and really what I'm passing on to this new budget director sitting here is, is keeping tabs on the, those site plans that, that town manager Zudima was referring to. The site plans, the preliminary conversations. What's in the pipelines really important. And so over the years, when Rodney was way back in the planning department, is we developed this tool that helps us sort of recheck and validate what our tax assessor might be projecting for growth based on what we know is coming through the pipeline or potentially coming through the pipeline. So they give us a check and balance of, of where a project's sitting. Is it preliminary? Is it really a planning, site plan review? Is it moving into the engineering department? Has it already gone through inspections? And, and that helps us figure out a timing, not just for tax-based growth, but actually all of the development fees. And it kind of feeds into qualifying what we might be seeing as a, as a percentage increase. And that's something that we just were talking about this year is, our, this week, is passing on this ability to use information to sort of have a data-driven decision or qualifier at least of a percentage increase.
Yes.
Okay. So on the next slide, what you will see is, again, want to emphasize, this is not a recommended budget. This is not where it ends up. This is to start some discussion around what might come at certain levels above revenue neutral. So the way we're looking at that is, is the three cents would be really foundational of things that are already here and need support or things that you clearly identified that should occur. So economic development strategy. So, you know, that would include a position potentially too, if you count small business, that could work on economic development, strategy and implementation. Small business could be a component of sponsorship, as we talked about Tuesday night. You know, recognizing there's somebody that needs to work on that. That could well fall in that shop. And then help us understand, do we need more resources in the future to support that? Or what are we seeing in returns? Again, building some of those future investment reserves.
Excuse me, Brendan, could we change the slide up there too? I'm, I'm sorry. I'm like, sorry, my eyes are not what they once were.
That was me.
I got you. Sorry about that.
I'm clicking over here and not clicking over there.
So operational needs for new capital projects, you, you've emphasized that to us. So we're working on that. Technology replacements. Now, that's not enhancements. You'll see that in the five-cent model. But technology replacements, public safety resources, that is staffing, that is some equipment, that is some other things that we'll get into more detail with you. Some basic facility repairs. We talked a couple of meetings ago about our own capacities in our buildings and how do we potentially maximize that capacity, recognizing we're probably not building anything new in the near future. And then website upgrade and language access. So again, in that communication and that transparency setting, we've heard that there is, you know, that we could certainly do more and better with our website. And then the language access plan is just continues to be a tremendous opportunity for us to be able to fund that. And then if you move over towards adding two pennies, and again, this is, this could change, but this is just to give you some thought of what's there. You could do a half a penny towards your interest in land reserves, grounds and park enhancements to sort of catch up with the fact that there's a lot to be done in the parks and not all of it is done as efficiently as it could be. We don't always keep it up as well as it necessarily could be in all cases. And that's not to say it's not at a good level, but to keep it at a level that I think Morrisville comes to expect. Again, there's your technology enhancements, doing more through our IT department and with some of our other departments, pedestrian access, street scape planning. So we don't currently have a street scape plan. There is a request to develop one of those and that would accompany sort of the CTP and would give us, as we look at doing different betterments and the way we do things throughout the town, there'd be a consistent plan for that, rather than having to have conversations every time of what do we want this one to look like, what do we want that meeting to look like? We have a plan for that. Smart shuttle program and potential expansion there. Affordable housing rental assistance would potentially come there and enhance the mural program now that we have that off the ground. And then a half a penny towards public works CIP debt. And then if you move all the way over to the right, again, just to give you an idea of what could be there, that could put both your land reserve and your CIP penny at, at the full penny rather than a half. That would help us with some additional grounds crews for public works and some of the equipment that goes with that. Streets program additions, expansion of some fire prevention and, and staffing up the fire marshal's office. Again, particularly around that community engagement side of it. Some other engagement tools that we might use to try to continue to reach out to our community. And then this would be the optimal mural program of doing everything we think we could do with that. And then increased facility and park improvements. Again, as some examples to just give some reference to what you might see at each of those levels of additional revenues. Sure.
What is meant by streets program additions?
So, so the streets programs has to do largely, I believe, with equipment to be able to handle some small jobs more efficiently and effective and the department. So they get to things quicker and not having to leverage external partners. I'm getting some nods back there. I got a thumbs up.
It is largely equipment because we have some staff now that has an expanded skill base that is able to be used and also be able to do some training. So our most recent hire in our streets division as a supervisor is, is it fair to say, looking like a rock star? So he really gives us some additional capacity that we just didn't have before. So again, instead of having, for an example, this would be related to doing, you know, some smaller sidewalk repairs, some other smaller concrete jobs. This will be buying some of that equipment to let them do that work, which reduces the cost because you don't have to pay for the equipment, makes it done faster because you don't have to wait for their property to be available and makes it easier to do because with everybody as busy as they are, some of the contractors aren't super excited about coming in and doing, you know, three-sawed square replacements or one curb that just needs an emergency repair. It lets us take care of that quicker.
So is there, I'm sorry if you already went over this. Is there no land reserve or public works reserve in the three-cent model?
No.
So, okay, yeah. Is there, is there anything? I understand nothing's in stone.
Correct.
But I, I've got to tell you, the, not funding those reserve funds at all, I'm very concerned about that.
And we've heard that tonight and we've heard the interest in it being a full penny. So that, that's again, that's what tonight's about.
Right.
Let us use this. Let us go back and continue and massage this and, and ideally come back to you with something that, that addresses some of those concerns for you. Again, it's, it's all about give and take and we're happy to help you with how we're seeing that give and take.
I want to make sure everybody understands this slide is that as you move across the three cents to the five cents, you're adding on to what's already there. I just want to make sure everybody got that.
I'm just saying, we didn't add any.
She wants to sue her.
I'm saying, we didn't, we didn't add any reserve stuff in the three cents. That's my problem.
We've got some good prompt questions for you in a minute and y'all can all weigh in on.
I know a shut-up council member, Rabati, when I hear one.
Any other questions on that slide?
Yes. So what is meant by other engagement tools?
So we continue to look at ways for communications to be able to effectively engage with the community. So some of that is going to be also linked to enhancing what we potentially do with the language access program. You know, we have tried engage Morrisville. We're now using Talk Morrisville on Facebook. There are other opportunities out there as we continue to look at software that's more designed to be proactive in that engagement and do some things for us and automate some things. So we'll continue to look at that as ways that we can try to better communicate with our community. And sometimes that's a challenge because you can create lots of opportunity, but if the opportunity is not taken, it, it is a two-sided sort of point in that regard. But what we do certainly want to continue to make those efforts to look at different ways to outreach, to engage different components of the community.
So that's what I encompassed the way for just the software.
It could be software. It could be offering more opportunities to do community meetings. It could be more opportunities to do online community meetings. It could be any number of tools in that regard.
Okay. I'm just trying to associate.
I'm just trying to associate with the bullet description is to what is the money? What are you buying?
Sure, that, that's fair. And, and as we come back to you with, with seeing more of a recommended budget, you'll get to see this. This again is really sort of the, here's what you could get philosophically in these areas. Not, because there's, there's great differences in the value of these bullets, right? I mean, some of these are very big numbers. Some of these are not that big a number.
I don't deal well, well in esoteric, you know.
We will get there.
Oh, we're layering in.
I want to know specifics.
I know you do. We're getting there. This is helping us get there.
Liz is laughing because she's heard that a million times.
It would also be helpful if like, I mean, not for now, obviously, but when we go out to the public, if, if we say something like additional grounds crew, it would be really helpful, rather than just saying additional people, to, to help people understand what the additional grounds crew.
Yeah, there will be a very different framework in terms of how we share with you talking points for the community. Because we've heard that clearly from you. It's not about just people. It's about support of existing programs. It's about taking care of our existing assets. So we'll help you certainly frame that as we determine what those priorities are. Absolutely. Great point. Okay? Jeannie?
Okay. I, I just wanted to touch on this because I think it's really important to connect while we've been talking a lot really about capital reserve, future investments and operations. There's a connection to all things that we're trying to accomplish when we look at your philosophy, when we look at really your words and your ideas that tie the two together. Reserves is one of those binding things that feeds, and debt that feeds this, this five-year model that we're working on and brings to life some pretty tangible things that you are. I'm just falling on the job, aren't I? Thank you for holding me accountable. So I just wanted to put really the, the project investments in front of you. As we develop, as Byron and I work together to kind of retool this model, this debt model and feed in really what you're, we're hearing you say in use of reserves, it's really critical for us to hear that so that we can retool this model and, and see what we can shuffle around. How can we fold in the additional inflationary impacts that we know, we told you at retreat, you need more money for, to be able to afford public works. You know, you need additional resources to complete town center. That, that those were your priorities, town center and public works. And just wanted to put in front of you some other things we were hearing you say. Transportation, pedestrian, traffic signals, the flow of traffic are also critically important to you. And I wanted to make sure you saw what projects we have in the pipeline that we're working towards. And, and, and see the value that that 84, this is $84 million worth of investment that's shown on this page. Now, as the budget, we layer in information, you're going to see much more detailed information. But that's really the, the impact that I wanted to show you tonight, that we talked about at retreat of needing to fuel, fuel this five-year picture to bring it to fruition. And what I just threw on there for you, the unfunded items that we're working on those as we talk and our CIP committee, and Jeffrey is one of those folks and Byron is as well. We talk about how do we bring in and plan for that next five-year picture that's going to encompass another bond referendum in the future and determining this year if we can see that in that long-range picture, when is that timing and what would be those projects that we could align to that? Town manager Zudima, you want to add anything to this?
In a second, I do.
Okay, sorry. We've got some sneezes going on.
Sorry. It's, it's apparently contagious. No, I, I think Jeannie has covered it well. Again, this is just sort of a snapshot to remind you of what's out there, what we think has funding, what we know doesn't have funding. Again, relates back to that additional, you know, strengthening your reserve, being prepared for this. Certainly some opportunities here, potentially for some grant funding that we're not yet aware of. But again, some of this is just the town, I mean, the betterments, you, we do it or we don't do it. You know, that's not going to be a funded opportunity. You know, we've got the Watkins Road Park potentially coming online. That really becomes timing of when, when there's funds available to begin to do some conceptual design and then look at what does it really look like? And that, that's not going to be, we don't anticipate a heavy lift because it's not really building structures. So it's really just deciding what passive activity do you want there? And then working on it, just one example. And then again, you've got a future fire station that you need to fund out on Paramount Parkway to complete that model and to get away from the impact that we're going to feel from the DOT project on NC 54. And then again, Jeannie highlighted the, the future unfunded that we'll continue to discuss and try to figure out. But again, there's some grant opportunities there as well.
Can I make sure that council member Rabati, did you have yours up or was that just the time?
I'm sorry. I forget this thing. It should be like a little switch on them. There should be like a little switch on that thing that puts it down when you're done talking.
So I have my microphone on. On this, why does the Watkins Road Park take priority over Crabtree Creek Nature Park?
Or Markham Park for that matter.
Well, I can kind of understand why Markham would be later. Want to wait until you have more of the land.
Correct. We don't own all the property. So I think the way that it's on here, sorry, I mean, interrupt you. I think the reason that it's on here that way is that Watkins Road Park is in all likelihood a much less expensive project than Crabtree Creek Nature Park. Now again, you all have not said no to Crabtree Creek. You know, again, there, I, I, I think you've said it half-kiddingly, but I think there are potentially sponsorship opportunities that could help with that and things like that could, could move that up. And so this is again, just a, here's a snapshot of where we think it could be. And again, Watkins Road, because we already have access to that property and because it's going to be a passive park, don't anticipate it being near the cost of what Crabtree Creek Nature Park would be.
But I mean, that's how we've talked about Crabtree Creek Nature Park is that it's a passive park. And, you know, while that Watkins Road may cost less, and you guys don't even, we don't, we don't have the conceptual design yet, whereas Crabtree Creek, we do. So I mean, even if it is less expensive, you're taking money away that could potentially have gone to Crabtree Creek Park. I just don't understand why that's all of a sudden. It's like the little kid jumping in line in front of me.
Can I just add some clarification? Are you okay with that?
Please.
So when we were at retreat, we talked specifically about Crabtree Creek Nature Park and some challenges there. And it had largely to do with an exorbitant cost that it just keeps climbing and climbing. And the ask of council at retreat was, where are your priorities? We, we need resources. We, we identified that public works needed additional funding. We know we have this, this town center that we are working on that, that, that we'd asked you, what's the priority? And, and what we heard very clearly was town center and public works and that you allowed us to use the resources that were in Crabtree Creek to be able to align to town center needs because that's the first thing. So the reason why I have it here at the end is we have to retool. What is Crabtree Creek is what we also heard from you. While it's held, we, we have a plan. We know we've got something we can do, but what can we do? And now can, how and when can we realign those resources? So it's not that it's there for lack of priority. It's just right now, while we're working on retooling the debt model and putting those priorities and moving those funding sources to that, I need to figure out with Byron, where does it now fit? And at what, what cost could we afford? And I think that's valuable information in, in knowing and understanding what resources we could put to that that could, could help us determine now what can we do with maybe the designs that we do hold. I believe I saw council member Johnson first and then council member Rabati.
Are we under, with the agreement we have, are we under an obligation to do something with that parking?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
We can do it at our own time.
Yes. Yeah, I think this was, correct me if I'm wrong, this was originally envisioned as. Yes, yeah, I think this was, correct me if I'm wrong, this was originally envisioned as, you know, when we thought that the park would be available to us, it came available a little sooner, it worked a little quicker. So, and again, you know, Crabtree Creek was ahead of these. So it's not that these were moved ahead of Crabtree, Crabtree was in FY '25 and just got paused. So like Jeannie said, it just needs to come back in. It's not necessarily that it's not prioritized over Watkins or Markham. And again, Markham is floating because we have to purchase more property there before it's realistic to do the significant part. Now, we may have an opportunity to do something smaller on the Wake County-owned land, and we're getting some clarification around that. But this is talking about that whole cul-de-sac that we're intending to purchase once the family's ready to do that and that bigger park.
Council member Robati?
The, so these are fiscal years, I assume, right? So are we saying, in this plan, are we saying that in FY '27, the Watkins Road Park, that would take design implementation, the whole McGill would take place in FY '27?
No, it takes at least a year plus, depending on the type of project. So it crosses it, that's just when I'm saying the funding needs to start for us to be able to start fueling and making things happen.
Okay, all right, just checking, thanks.
Council member Fender? Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, we are close to done, but I'm happy if you all would like to take ten minutes, stretch legs and do whatever. And I think we're within ten or fifteen minutes. I mean, you've given us a lot of good feedback, I think you've already hit some of our prompt questions. Yeah.
All right.
We're happy to do that.
One more comment, yes.
Because I think it's fairly short. I just wanted to add that, you know, I would rather us see, I would rather us do like Phase One of Crabtree Creek Nature Park before we spend any money on Watkins Road Park. And I, you know, and with the school being there, I don't think, in fact, for me, when I'm thinking about the high school there and how they would use that land, I would, I would rather, well, if I was a kid or one of those teachers, I'd want to use that land nat, as a natural area for them to go out there and explore, do science projects or whatever. I think that's more valuable having it there rather than taming it into some, you know, pretty park.
I get that, I think, and we can confirm this with the schools, but I don't believe they'll do any organized activities in that area because it's in the, or it's in the.
Airport overlay.
That's why they won't, that's why they didn't, that's why they gave up on that property. And I could be wrong, we can ask them, but I don't believe they would even endorse organized activities out there because of the overlay. That's my guess.
So you think that like the science teacher wouldn't lead a group of twenty kids out into the woods to go look for spiders or something?
Honestly, I think the way that they look at the overlay, I don't think that they would allow organized activity, but we can certainly verify that.
Okay, and really that's besides the point. My main point is, if we're going to spend money there, it bothers me that Watkins Road Park is already scheduled for 2027 where if, if money is an issue, then let's just do Phase One of Crabtree Creek Nature Park.
What are you envisioning as Phase One, Donna?
Well, I don't, the playground but without the boardwalk. But you know, I know that Crabtree Creek Nature Park was on your CIP before Ann and I were on council.
Yeah, but it was going to be two and a half million dollars.
Yeah, but you can, but like I said, we could still, whatever money you think you're going to put into Watkins Road Park, put it toward Crabtree Nature Park, Phase One. We already have a preliminary design.
Did council give direction to ask for the amenities that would be in Crabtree Creek Nature Park? Where they could otherwise be placed within the town? There was some discussion about that.
I remember talking about that.
There was some discussion. Like there's the boardwalk and then educational stuff. It was, but this, we can't come back to the break, we're talking about that subject. So did we give direction towards that or where does that stand?
I don't recall that direction. I know we had the conversation that that was a possibility at some point. I don't think we have any direction to pursue that, to my recollection. So Giselle says I'm right, and she's never wrong.
So if we could FAQ what the amenities of Crabtree Creek Nature Park are and whether or not council would be interested in seeing if there's opportunities for introducing those on existing properties without doing a full-blown or even a Phase One, an additional playground. That would be helpful to me as part of this discussion.
So just to clarify, it's just there because we have to think about what you are all talking about. And where does it now, as we were reworking the numbers, where can it fit back in?
I think it can fit right there.
So this is great information, thank you.
Cross out Watkins Road Park and Crabtree Creek.
And I'm going to ask for a little clarification because those are two very different things. One of those is, is we have a plan and it's really just parsing out what might come first. And I think we can do that through staff. We don't need to have a consultant help us with that, we can, we can come back to you with that. If we need to start looking at what components to put somewhere else, we're going to spend money to do that.
Yeah, I don't want to do that because whatever.
Again, I'm just, I just want to be clear on what that ask is, is understanding because, you know, the amenities you're talking about would be the boardwalk going out, perhaps the ADA accessible playground, the other building's a restroom, and then, you know, there was sort of an open.
Stormwater. There was the storm, or yeah, stormwater, pond, wetlands, educational area.
You are all demonstrating why I put it over here.
I guess more, more a list of the amenities. What are we, what's important to us? Because my thought was.
I think that's.
The educational component was essentially along the boardwalk, just having some of our educational signs like we have along our greenways. Which we could add more along our greenways, which have the same wetland amenities.
Or put those funds into a savings bucket to go toward Crabtree Creek Nature Park. You're like stealing funds from the project.
Okay, and if you could remind us what the phasing would look like and what, when you took one or two things out, whether or not that actually saved money? Just remind us, you already gave us that presentation. Thank you.
Send us the presentation.
It's rare that you and I are not really aligned on park stuff. So this is interesting.
This was in the retreat materials that actually Giselle covered, I thought, very well. And actually, I'm sure Jeffrey and others, Mark, had a lot to do with that, so. All right, so I think everybody's got their cards down. Mayor?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Okay, it's eight twenty-five, we're all back, I'll pass it back to town manager Zutma.
Just hand it right to Byron.
All right, sounds good.
So I have a couple of questions and just want to take the opportunity to go around the room and get your thoughts. So the first question is, how would you describe a good balanced budget? What needs to be included, what needs to be enhanced? What level of resources are you all as a council willing to establish an alignment of investments back into the community? And is there consensus on anything above? So Mayor, how would you like to start? Do you want to go around the room?
Yeah, anyone who'd like to start, I think Mayor Pretem Garamella was interested in sharing his thoughts.
But yeah. Okay. What's a good balanced budget, what must be included? Obviously, whatever your operations is needed. But more, I'm always looking from a vantage point of a citizen. If we are not going revenue neutral and going above, what is the value add? Am I as a taxpayer looking at it? Is my number one question that I want to see. And what must be enhanced based on what we sell them? It has to be a good story in terms of parks, transportation, the top items that we are hitting. What level of resources is council willing to establish an alignment? So that's exactly, I was talking about the first two, you know, like invest back to them. You know, what they can use on a daily basis, greenways, parks, transportation. And if there is a better service like programming, that, you know, new program or something like from Fox and Rex or some new program you start in MAFC or something else, you know, like, or, you know, we are talking about leaf collection next year or something like that, that is enhanced. You know, I'm purely looking from, why should the customer find off you? Why should a citizen?
Clarify, since I actually heard what you just said, and I think that's a good point to make sure we all understand the meaning of resources. So in this case, we're talking about adding new resources in your tax rate. So we're at revow and you have to each year set the tax rate. But this year it's more important because you have the ability to set it above revenue neutral and that gives you some extra resources. That's an important level of understanding tonight as we take information away and try to help the manager and council build a budget. Is where is that line for you, at three cents, five cents, seven cents? Where is, where are you not comfortable? That's a really important piece of information we could use if you're comfortable sharing that. And I respectfully say that last part. But it is important for us to be able to move things forward. Thank you for whispering it and me picking it up.
And I agree because it helps us know better what to come back with or what not to potentially come back with. And again, not asking for any commitments tonight, this is not, you said you'd do this, and I mean, that's not how this works, right, you know that. But any feeling for where you may be at after hearing some of what you've seen and what could be in some of the enhanced revenue through, through the not going revenue neutral would be helpful. Not, certainly not the last opportunity to discuss this, but just helps us better prepare what we bring back to you.
And to clarify what Mayor Pretem said, are you looking for kind of more specifics also about what a good balanced budget has in it? Like at the very end, you mentioned leaf collection. So is that something that you'd like to see in this or are you just sort of giving an example? Because what you said was helpful, but kind of big picture. I mean, we're trying to give staff direction, like they showed us a lot of different things. Which of those are really important that should be in this budget in your perspective from the customer side?
Yeah, for, if I had to look at it, I did not like the three cents, five cents because like the things within the three cents and the things within the five cents, those bucketed items. Because I thought there was no clarity. If I had to go tell you're getting a three cents tax increase, most of the things I saw, seeing the three cents are operational, nothing really that resonates with the residents. And if I do five, I'm still getting half a cent there for parks. You know, like land acquisition, that doesn't fly for me, you know? So I, when we, when I said I'm ready to invest one cent in land acquisition, means one cent to start with, you know, not only if it is at five or seven. Because that is staff giving that model, but from my thought process, that's not what I'm thinking back of my head.
So if that model is fleshed out with more outcomes, because those are our kind of large, big buckets in each of those bullet points, like we do with the bond, we say, and this would probably mean this. Is that the level that you need in order to feel comfortable saying, yes, those are things you want?
And also, I want to also know from, this is only three cents. I want to also know from the bond point of view, what is also complementing that? As part of the CIP, what it is flowing in, you know? I don't want them, is it complementing or is it adding or is it enhancing these things? Because we have the bond money, which is getting utilized every year, like certain amount.
In the CIP?
In the CIP.
That's where that money goes.
So, so the three cents, if, so some of the items I'm seeing, like the same ones. So where is the CIP getting money coming from the bond?
Let me make sure that I understand what you're saying.
If you want to go back to the three cents, five cents slide.
Okay, I'm going to do that.
Okay, so for example, we talked about covers operation needs for new capital projects, right? So which new projects are we talking about?
Okay, that is what I thought you were thinking.
And then public safety resources, so I don't know what that means. Does it staff or is it what is it? I have no clue on that, you know, because, and basic, like, and then you're talking about future investment reserves. So does that, if in my sense, future investment reserve, I would rather have a one cent there dedicated to land acquisition or something than just say a bucket of future.
So in that context, and I'm not trying to pin you down to a number, but are you saying you'd rather see land acquisition penny in the three cent model because that sends the right message, but you're still willing to consider some of the things from three cents and five cents? Or are you leaning towards saying, I don't think we do more than three and I want that in there?
I want, I'm not, I just, I saw this morning with all honesty, all these things. But this needs a discussion among the council and reshuffling of the whole thing. It certainly does. It's, this is your budget that you are proposing, right? You know, in your thought process, it's in your thought process, you know, respectfully, what you guys, all three, you know, and the staff are thinking. And so for us, like, you know, when I, the thing that really doesn't go well with me is even if I think of five cents, I don't know where I stand right now, but half cent only for penny, for land.
And we've heard that, we've heard that clearly.
And the CIP, public works, half cents. So I don't know from where that comes. We know we said we want public works, but how is that model going to work? It's for the first time I'm seeing that because we said we will be using other areas. Like they have a different funding, so I did not know what that really meant.
So I think I'm hearing move some of the things from five cents to really three cents a little bit. I'm also hearing some clarification of what are we getting when we say capital? What, what debt, when we look at the debt that we're paying for, what projects is that debt paying for? Might be helpful to know. I think that's what I was picking up from him earlier. Anything else from you that he's, he's pinging for us?
No, I get that. And I think particularly the pennies, we heard you earlier and we recognize there's some reorganizing to do there. Again, just interested in reactions to that that might help us figure out what do we bring back to you?
And if you go one slide more back where you had the allocations of more, one more. Yeah, this one, yeah, so it says the talent investment, I'm assuming, is it salary adjustment or is it new people? Or what are we talking about here?
So that's again, just a general category that shows there are two million dollars in asks related to that. So that is generally related to merit increases, to if we were to recommend a COLA, that's the pay-in-class study that we get done annually on about one-third of the departments. So that money is primarily talking about that for talent investment, existing talent.
So that is over and beyond what we already do. You're saying additional two million dollars. Yeah, so, so for me, that, that is a little bit of a hard one to, is it sustainable? Is it, you know, what kind of a model are we looking at? Because when you started a budget. Because when you started a budget initially, it's not just for this year, it's like a future year. So, so I, so I want to know, like, is it again coming two years, two million tomorrow in our next budget? Because we had just recently. So how are we, you know, projecting it?
Yeah, and we're generally addressing that as one of the initial priorities through the newly occurring revenue. And again, balancing that with how much there is there. But yes, that's, that's something that falls in our minds into that initial bucket of the new money that's there without any discussion of revenue neutral.
Yeah, so, so those all have to be very clearly mentioned, like just when you say two million, for me, back of my mind is, is the sustainability, it's like three and a half cents, which is ringing at, you know, two cents to.
Right, so keep in mind, this is, this is conceptual, this is to give you ideas. When we come back and start talking about an actual recommended budget, and here's what would be included at three cents, and here's what might be included if you were to consider five cents, and if you were to consider seven cents, you know, this is the additional things, trying to help you understand the challenges that we see in prioritizing what we think needs to be done, because we're not really into many wants. We're into needs that relate to existing priorities, supporting those existing priorities, and also looking out for what we know is coming or what you prioritize. Small example, economic development. Other, other ideas are, you know, additional reserve investment, things like that. So there's going to be much more detail.
So, so, yeah, I need more meat on these things, because public safety 3.5, I don't know what that is. You know, is it more staff? Is it more equipment? You know, what are we, are we talking about the new fire station? I have no clue.
Let me ask you this question to try to dig in a little bit here, and I recognize you have your flag up. So let me, let me dig in to your public safety question. What do you need to see for public safety, whether it's in a three cent or a five cent? What do you need in this budget to meet that public safety need that you feel is important and critical at this time?
Let me put it back to you. Like, what, what did you get, you know, as a requirement from your staff that you're saying to have that 3.5? You know, I know from my point of view, we, on the bond, we said we will work on one more fire station or, you know, whatever it is. That is the level I know. Like, you know, are you talking about 3.5 for more personal because we don't have a good coverage? Why are we talking about new, more fire people?
So that 3.5 is inclusive of a new rescue 21 at about 1.2 million dollars. It's inclusive of replacement of the S C B As, the air packs at about $900,000. Now, keep it in mind, we anticipate grant funding that should cover about 600 of that.
No, that's fine, that's, that's exactly the kind of answers I'm looking for.
Can I just, I know I'm, I'm jumping in anyhow. A recurring cost versus a capital. When I see these buckets, I don't know if that's reoccurring, if that's capital, that would be helpful. Because recurring costs, we have to be able to account for that and sustain that, that over many years is not going to prevail, especially when it comes to employees.
Correct.
Is that helpful?
Yeah.
So breaking that out.
Yeah.
Five categories, recurring versus.
Yeah, and that's the intention. Again, this, this was not intended to say, do you support $2 million in talent investment? This was just to give you a picture of where the 19 million in requests came from. And that's why, you know, future slides start to break it down more, really just to get you to assess your level of comfort with the concept of we're showing you that there's needs in public safety. And before we bring you any sort of recommended budget, obviously, there's going to be descriptions of what those are and a breakout of whether they're recurring or one time and how they align with your priorities, how they align with the strategic plan to show you. And again, a message to the community of what is the value that they're getting, what is the outcome for them that would justify consideration of above revenue neutral.
It's prompting you to define the meaning for us. We talked about that at retreat. Sustainability versus sustainability is two different things, and that's what you're helping us create shape to. So digging in is important. Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, I'm done. I'm, I'm done, you know, like, more information, even before I say, are you okay with three or five, you know, like, all this, like, you said ladder 21. That is the answer that I'm looking for, you know, because I'm not going to say, don't get a ladder 21, you know, and compromise public safety, no.
And I don't want to go completely down, I'll answer this and stop, is keep in mind that, you know, as an example, ladder 20, or excuse me, rescue 21, which is the replacement apparatus, is going to be funded through a reserve. So it doesn't necessarily have to come out of, you know, a revenue neutral number or a tax number. But this is just, again, just to show you what the needs are across the board, recognizing there's a variety of sources that would fund that.
So, so I, I think Liz was spot on. Is it coming out of the already initiated reserve fund? Is it coming out of a capital fund? Is it coming out of a new tax that we are trying to do? That would be helpful to put that together. Yeah. That's all for me.
Okay. Let's remove that. No, I was just, I thought we were going to each answer the questions, that's all.
Are you ready?
Yes, he answered his questions.
Okay. So can I see the questions again?
Oh, sorry.
Maybe roll, roll forward and then roll back. There you go.
So I think a good balanced budget, in this case, in a revale year, is going to be forward looking. I, I think, I mean, I've said this a number of times tonight already, but I think we absolutely have to prioritize the reserve funds. I feel really strongly about that. And I don't, I don't know about the, I think it's early days to talk about three cents, five cents, but I will say that I'm very uncomfortable that at three cents, we're not funding the C I P reserve or the, the land reserve.
The C I P and the land?
Yeah. That I think, you know, and I mean, I understand things can shuffle around, but I, but I really, I think no matter how we shuffle that stuff, we're going to be taking something out of the three cents that we need. So I think, you know, I, I think that's a nonstarter, in my opinion. And you know, I guess it, I guess one other thing going back to what the mayor Protam said is that, yes, we, we want to do things that the public is asking for, and we want to do things that, that we can help the public understand, but I, you know, but when we talk about projects like the Public Works building, the Public Works facility, like, it's, I mean, yes, that might be a tough sell to the public, like why we need it, but the fact is, it underpins everything else we're doing. So, you know, we, so yes, we want to do the things that, we want to do things that people want, of course, but, you know, let's not lose sight of the fact that we are in the best position to understand what people need. And the things that people need are, you know, fire trucks in a couple of years and a new Public Works facility and the town center and, you know, so, so I think that there's going to be, I'm hoping, the support for a number of non-sexy projects in this budget that, you know, might take some additional explaining to the public, but that, you know, we need to get ahead of this stuff now. And I think that every time we have an opportunity in a revale and we don't take advantage of it, I think we do the public a disservice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we go then?
So for me, I think what would be, what must be included or a lot of what's already been said, investment in transportation and investment in land acquisition, primarily for parks and green space. I do think, we've heard a lot, I've heard a lot over the years of how the public does put parks and green space at a high priority for them. It also must include anything that we need for public safety. For enhancements. I'm thinking, and I don't know if Mayor Protam Garamella said this or not, if that's where I picked it up from, was like our athletic program for the Parks and Recs, investment in that, because I hear so many, well, I hear we have problems getting coaches, but then I also hear that because of our program never has enough teams or enough coaches, they end up using Towne and Carrie's Athletic, like Little League Baseball and Softball. And further enhancement for me would be sustainability, any sustainability initiatives.
I forgot that, me too. You know, I've got to say that.
Level of resource. I'm definitely not in favor of being at revenue neutral, nor am I in favor of keeping the tax rate the same at 39 cents. Like Councilmember Robati said, we, we need to take advantage of the revale year. So, I mean, I'm more in the five cent to possibly towards seven cent range, depending on what that includes. I do look forward to when we do get to the point where, like, we get that report, like that Martha would put out, where it like lists, you know, okay, this budget, and it includes this, 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 this. I look forward to seeing that.
The prioritized worksheet, yes, the, the table that shows the one time in the.
Yeah, I'm very interested in, in when we get to that point of seeing that. But I do.
This is all very helpful to that.
Okay, yeah. I do think it is important to, I mean, just like you've said, Jeannie, is within the inflation, the revale of property affects the town's ability to do business. So we can't afford to stay at revenue neutral. That would be a disservice to the residents. So we need to take advantage of this opportunity this year. That's it.
Thank you. Who's next? Anybody else comfortable?
I was a little bit surprised when it was presented this way. I, I mean, when I walked out of the retreat, the most, the best part of the retreat for me was when the manager came in and you had a slide, I was trying to find it, that had like these three areas we were going to focus on. And one was land acquisition, which I think is really important. So I wanted to have one cent allocated to land acquisition, because I think that's so important for the town, because I think it helps us with our sustainability, it helps us with our affordable housing, and I think it's really, really important. Transportation reserves, I think is important as well. We talked about that earlier. So, so for me, a balanced budget is looking at the current revenues, what our projected revenues are, where we're going to fall short in terms of critical areas of town from operational perspective, and then balancing that with whatever expenses we have. So I look at this budget discussion now, kind of regretting that we didn't make the solid waste discussion earlier, because, you know, like last year, because we could have had excess capacity to make, you know, these numbers a little lower. And so, you know, I guess land acquisition, transportation, you know, some of the things, you know, C I P in terms of the Public Works, so that, that would, that'd be an important one. And so I was under the impression that, you know, we're, I definitely don't want to do revenue neutral, so I was already thinking, you know, one cent for land on top of that, one cent for, you know, you know, part of that tax rate for C I P, Public Works. And then, so when I look at it, it's kind of confusing to look at it saying five cents, and then it only include a half a cent and a half a cent. So whatever you can do, you know, to kind of give us a budget that gives us our different options. I have to think about, I'm not ready to come in this meeting and tell you, you know, what I want the tax rate to be based on this, five cent, seven cent. I don't think I'd be in favor of seven cents, but I'm always willing to look at something, but I just think that we've got to kind of factor in, you know, what, you know, well, I just need to see what, what is all going to entail before I can make a decision, listen to my colleagues, but most importantly, listen to the public during the process in terms of what, you know. I think at the end of the day, I'll end with this, I mean, I think, I would, I would actually, you know, say it's not a tax increase, it's a revenue adjustment, which we're trying to, so that could be, you know, talk to communications about that. But, but the idea would be that, you know, whatever we do above the revenue neutral should be, should be actually leading to something tangible that the public can see that we're going to be not doing revenue neutral, but we're going to increase the tax rate or adjust the revenue rate to do this, to give you this. So that's how I think we have to break it down, because that makes it a lot easier for the council to sell it to the public, right? Whether it's five cents, three and a half, four cents, I mean, I don't know if I'm helping here, because I don't know what guidance you're really looking for in terms of like, so.
Looking what you're, what you're thinking, what you're feeling.
Want me to go next? I'll go next. A good budget would make sure that our level of service remains the same, that we're not diminishing the services that we offer today to the public. I do, we already talked about the reoccurring costs, because I have that on my list, making sure I understand what's reoccurring in these buckets you have and these line items or bullets or whatever you want to call it, and, and what is a one-time cost. Anything that's reoccurring, I want, I would hope to hear something about how you're, you anticipate to sustain this over time. Because, we'll tell you, I, I'm a huge public safety person, but when I see 3.5 million this year, I, we can't continually do 3.5 million every year. So I, that gives me a little heartburn. So maybe when I understand what's behind those numbers, and they, hopefully, it's not all reoccurring. Definitely transportation improvements, intersection improvements, there needs to be, we need to articulate clearly the public benefit to what we're doing. And there needs to be, you know, this public investment needs to be obvious to the public too. So I, I would like to see that. As far as the options, I, I'll tell you right now, I'm not, I'm not in favor of a seven cent option. I think that is too much to ask. You know, I hear this is not a tax increase, this is a tax increase. There is a reason why we have to calculate and make public a revenue neutral rate, because the revenue neutral rate is the equivalent to our no tax increase rate. So anytime we go above that, that is a tax increase to the public, and I think seven cents is a burden on, on many people here. You know, not all, that's for sure. There's, there's lots of folks in this community that could absorb that and afford it, but I'm really concerned about the ones that can't. So I'm, I'm really almost a hard no on seven cents. And then I agree with, you know, we need to kind of move some of these line items around in these buckets. I'm looking now at the, the three cent, five cents, seven cent option. I, I agree with having more discussion on exactly what gets pulled in where and how and.
May I ask a clarifying question? When you, because you've said this a couple of times, in intersection improvements, when you say that, are you reaffirming what we already have in the pipeline or more?
I would definitely want more, but yes, I am reaffirming, and any more that we can do, I think is transportation, Satish said this earlier tonight, transportation is the number one issue in this town, and if we are not demonstrating that we are continually hacking away at it and doing what we can, I, I think that's extremely problematic.
And not just to, just to add to that, like, you know, we have been putting money towards the transportation and especially intersection improvement, we have not seen a single project getting done, other than Marshall Carpenter, you know, which is part of the whole overall, you know, D O T. So even if you're putting money, nothing is getting done, not for our reasons, could be D O T delay, D O T something or something, but end of the day, then people don't care about it, you know? Like tomorrow, the holy thing is there on Saturday, I'm getting a whole rushback saying that why is the town not building the sidewalks on the side? You know, it's like hundreds of people, like people, like everyone is coming and complaining, and like we had the same thing with Chote Street, you know, like the sidewalk, you know, so even. So, even we are allocating money, none of the projects are getting done, it's just sitting there. So, what value am I adding by just saying, yeah, we are saving money for the transportation?
Well, I know you know this, but of course, the Aviation Parkway is a funded project, it's just DOT is holding it up.
Exactly.
So, it's, it's, you know, it would be foolish of us to go out there and build sidewalk up and down Aviation, when they're going to come in behind us and probably rip it all out and build it the way they want, so...
You know, between HSNC and, you know, and Church Street, you know, like, I mean, the people were trying, people walking, like, on the grass, on the side of, on the side of Marshall Carpenter Road.
It is dangerous.
Well, that's Aviation on that side. No, I totally agree, it's very unsafe, and people are complaining, and I totally, I'm just adding another piece of information, I'm not saying what's good or bad, I'm just saying, the reality of what we're up against.
Well, I appreciate you clarifying that, and just, I needed to make sure, we're, we're not, we're talking beyond just what's already captured in the CIP, we're talking execution, bringing things quicker to be tangible and realized in the community, as well as adding in. So, it goes beyond just really these intersection improvement study that we've charted out in our CIP.
Shovel in the ground, here comes a turn lane.
It would be great if, if there was a video, like, I was really impressed with the video they showed at the council meeting the other night, it would be really, it would be great, you know, to go along with this budget, we could have some type of video of, like, your money at work, and the things that we have gotten done, which I think that people lose sight of.
I agree with that, too.
And like, and, you know, this is where your money has worked for you over the past four years, like, we asked you for bond dollars, here's what you see, you know, like, that kind of stuff, because I think that people, I don't think people really put that together, and really, all they see is the fact that there's still no sidewalk, and they've asked us for sidewalk for the entire time I've been on the council.
I agree with that, we need to celebrate our successes more often, I repeat that a lot. And we have done, and this is not to say, we have done some fabulous stuff.
We do.
Yeah, I agree.
I had one last thing to say, and then I'm going to, I think I'm done for the night, but I think, you, you mentioned one thing that really resonated with me, is the, the level of service. So, I think that, to me, is really what I need to know from the, I, I will say this, and, and I'm very proud to say this, but my trust in this staff is the highest it's ever been in my 12 years of service on the council, and I am going to really defer, I trust the administration, and I need to hear from you all, when you present a budget, of what budget would be the best to make sure that the service levels can either stay at where they are, or exceed those expectations, realizing that we also have to be sensitive to kind of like, you know, the public input and those kinds of things, right? I, I know, I'm not giving you a lot more detail, but what I'm saying is that this is an opportunity for us to not tell you, well, we want to go back to what the tax rate was, we have a chance to at least have consensus that we don't want to be revenue neutral. Now, we have to see from the staff and what you present, what are the critical areas, and you've already kind of laid that out, so I think that the quicker that, I mean, that's where, where I'm going from this budget, from this top four. So, thank you, I'm done for the night.
Can I add one more thing? I think, I don't think I said this, what would help, did I say this already? What would help me is if I understood the 5 million that we have, that's naturally occurring, I, I see, like, three little bullets here, what, what is that, 5 million's a lot of money, and I see three bullets. So, that would help to understand where that money is going. And again, and the same thing, reoccurring versus one time.
So, we can break out dollars for you, so as we layer in, and through these, these meetings that we have with you, as we get more detailed, but this information helps us do that, so that we realign it to really, really what we're hearing you say. So, for example, the care investment of people, that's over $2 million worth, just to take care of existing folks. Debt obligations, that, that's a, that's a $4 million number, just for existing debt. So, that's a significant amount of money that we have to program in, part of it's in your base budget, part of it is to sustain that three cents that you invested in with the bond referendum, and continue that, because the CIP is looking for it and needing it. If it's just in a nutshell, in a quick response, we can break that out for you.
That helps, that helps.
Nope, and I need to go back. Look, I caught myself that time.
See, I, I like guessing, kind of, about the level of service and the trust of staff.
Excuse me, that was me. That was me.
Essentially, I like that, and your foundational...
I know you did.
...I think about keeping lights on, doing what we've been doing, and I understand that we've, inflation's catching up, costs are catching up, so I think it's really important that that's really the base, and everything else is plus, enhanced, optimized. I think, I like everything that I see here, I trust that staff is figuring out stuff that we can explain to the residents, all the way up to second. So, I support what I see here, I look forward to trying to explain to residents why it's important, that we do all these types of things, they ask for things all through the year, but they have about a month to reaffirm them, and a lot of people don't know to do that, and we're going to have needs throughout the year, so I think a good budget is going to prepare us to take advantage of any opportunities that do come forward. Land acquisition comes right before, I mean, we have money coming into bond, money later, but if land acquisition opportunities come now, then it's scarce. I want to know that we can do that without giving up our intersection improvements, you know, have to delay our sidewalk gaps, because we need the money from something else to do something now that's really urgent. So, I came at this a little bit differently, I got a lot more to learn about what a good budget is, so I'm going to just give them what I guess, and I hope this is helpful. So, it's not really those things, but I, I really would love to get us to the fund dollars of 30%. So, that would be kind of an add-on, happy with any, any extra credit in the project, that we need to be, to finish that, and kind of, you know, credit area. If you're talking about all the reserve funds, you can defeat the reserve funds down to zero, it doesn't affect the credit, that's a 40%. You have the new funds for other things, the fund dollars, if you defeat that, it doesn't affect the credit, so that's what I think the reserve funds are really useful for, you can really use that. I really want to bring the ability of the sustainability planning forward, one or more years, in order to increase our resident engagement, we already sort of talked about this. I think there's partnership opportunities, and we can, we can use the entire town to target different areas, a small part of the town, and I think it's really important that we do our part, and help our residents do their part, also. I would love to see some way to get Church Street park activation this upcoming year, simply because we have those amenities and assets in place, and I think that's really a good way to improve. I don't think that costs a lot, it's essentially, we're not really able to kind of leverage or do anything, so we can just get some paths in there, because very basic, so, I want to do a tour, but we can't properly have it over there, now that we have possession, we're going to need it for everyone. I'd like to see the dog park complete, I want it completed to the level that we already decided, we'll do a presentation soon, but I don't think there's any real move to make that any less expensive, so I think that needs to be in the budget, so we can watch everything, CIP presentation, there's several, there's several, we have to show all of the Church Street sidewalks, we're, we're one of those projects, starting out fast and aggressive, so last prize, maybe if I did, then we don't have money, we're going to have to take from something else, to finish Church Street sidewalks, we've been talking about that a lot. What we're doing is speeding sidewalks, I'd like visiting them as well. We've been talking about sidewalk gaps, getting a little bit, doing better, town center land acquisition, I'd like to see that fully funded, if possible.
I'm done.
That was impressive. It did remind me to turn on my mic, though, so that's good, because mine is off, so I apologize for that. So, yeah.
Town center, town center land, fully funded, you said.
Yeah, the acquisition for town center, because those are going to come up, and we will need to buy them before we need them for Phase Two and Phase Three. So, we need to be ready to jump on those. I would love to fund the Veterans Memorial, or at least part of it. You can do it half this year, half next year, but I think that's an important amenity for our town. I'd like to see the Police Impact Team fully funded, as was mentioned by Chief Acosta, they did really great work, they got dismantled, stuff started to come up again, they re-engaged, they took care of things, so I think that's important. Just like our Traffic Safety Team, it took us a while to get that up, I think that's fully set now, so that's an example of something that's really a good investment. I'd like, our staff needs funded, that's that $2 million, that's just to maintain and retain. I think retention is really important, that's the most efficient thing you can do with your staff, train them up and retain them. Parkland acquisition has been mentioned a lot, I definitely like that. I would like to see the Habitat Project funded in this year. I think that the plan is really good to work with Habitat, I know the price tag is more than we expected, but if we want to do something meaningful and add new units to affordable housing, I'd like to see that. I see the town manager scratching his head, he's like, there is no way, but I'm going to keep on saying my list. I'd like to see the Down Payment Assistant Program funded also, I think that's a really good way to turn existing units into affordable housing units for residents who want to live in our town. I'd like to see a nonprofit support policy funded, we don't have that policy yet, but if we don't fund it now, it won't be in effect until July of next year at the earliest. So, we can forward fund something that's going to be useful to a lot of our residents, because they might need it sooner, especially if we adjust the property tax rate, there's some people that might be on the margins, that could benefit from having this, and tax bills don't go out till late in the year. So, we could reasonably have a policy in place if we fund it. Town center, the various costs need to be funded, so I don't want to be surprised and have to delay other things. CIP current programs, I want those shortfalls funded as well. I really would love to see us not have to play as much catch-up. I really think that we can do better for our residents, we have the opportunity to do so, and Economic Development Director position and an assistant, I would be very much in favor of. Our inflationary impacts are squeezing us really badly, and they have been for years. So, as was mentioned by a lot of people, this is a great example to explain to the residents why this is important to do it, we're actually lowering the property tax rate, although their tax bill will go up. So, total transparency, if they want more, and they ask for more all through the year, we can reasonably explain to them that their money is being well-invested by a world-class, accredited staff throughout all our departments. So, is that enough?
You'd have to double the tax rate.
I, I, I'm reasonable, in that I know that we're not going to go above nine, I think seven is very much in the right direction, and that, over time, some of those will be one-time, and then that can be applied to other things. I see, if we do some Veterans Memorial, that extra money could be used for Pugh House in the future. We have lots of things on our list that we would like to do, and we have the authority and the ability to get so much done, if we are willing to explain to the residents and bring them along with us about how this town can be even more for them and their families going forward into the future. Like Steve said, I'm done.
Final comments now? We're moving on? I'm not going to spend too much time on this, town manager, Zuma, this is just, just to say, it's a work in progress, and tonight was a really good night, I appreciate the time investment you gave us, and the words that you did share with us. Very important to hear, have your voice in our heads, as we start really the complex work of balancing, really, what do you want those buckets to look like, or where do you want your budget to look like? So, it's one budget the manager brings you, it's not three, and it's not 27, or whatever that number was that year, so...
Don't do that.
It's one budget that we have to work on, and try to tool all the different opinions that we heard tonight, and find something that the manager can provide each of you in, in the areas that you feel are most of value to you and the community. And it's a hard task, when you all are really sort of over in different areas, and how do we bring you together? And, and that's the hard work that we have, the manager has with his team, to go back now and to try to build that picture, retool that picture. This was just to prompt the conversation tonight, wasn't the budget. So, lots of work ahead of us, redoing revenues, really refining that, and scrubbing base budget, making sure what we already have access to, that is getting used, and make sure that we pull that, that money that's not back into other new things that we need to do, and really examining the other resources that we have, which are not just our reserves, but really, anything that, that is ready to close in a capital project that has some remaining funds, because of interest earned, for example. I, I want us to pull that back in, and maximize that resource that we've earned, just as a small example. And, and, and that's really what our role from this night and forward really, really takes on, and that's all that slide's about. And then Byron, you want to wrap us up with this?
Yes, so I will be very, very pleased to be able to. I just want to say, thank you for your comments, they are very, very useful, very appreciative of those, this keeps us on schedule for the budget. It's the most important thing.
Okay, sorry, no. And see, now, I was going to be brief, and now, anyway, y'all heard me, thank you so much, we are on schedule, this gives us an opportunity to take the next month, six weeks, and prepare a budget for you all for consideration. We will continue on that process, and continue to gather feedback from you all, and hopefully be able to continue on the schedule.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We have something on the 11th?
We have a work session, budget work session planned on April 11th. So, remember, that's earlier in the month because of City Vision, so we have a regular meeting the 9th, we have a budget work session the 11th, and then the second meeting Monday the 22nd.
Oh my gosh, I forgot to...
No, no, I'm sorry, bless you. So, again, meeting April 9th, that's our regular first Tuesday, work session the 11th, that'll be, I think we have roundtable on the 11th, and then also, we'll use the remaining time for a budget work session, and then the following meeting is Monday the 22nd, not the 23rd, would normally be, so that folks can leave the 23rd for City Vision.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be drawing to detail.
Yes, and I've got you down for remote participation. Oh, May, okay. I can only worry about April right now. Okay, I think that's all we have, I'll just echo very quickly the thank you, great information, again, did, we heard what I think we needed to hear tonight, that's really going to help us move forward, lots of good feedback, and so we'll see you again for Budget Talk on April 11th.
Okay, thank you very much.
They're in your calendar, I sent you calendar invites for all of them, yes, sir.
Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I heard a move from Council, Mayor Pro Tim Garamella, and a second from Councilmember Robati, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 6-0, thank you, it's 9:14, we are adjourned.